Order, and we're going to begin with the pledge of the flag in a moment of silence, please. I'd ask you to stand where you're located. Please pledge the flag at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
The United States of America.
To the republic which stands under God, under God.
A moment of silence, please. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
President.
Mr. Hough?
Here.
Ms. Hough?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Snee? Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Voe?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
President.
Call President.
Thank you. Mr. DeLuca, would you respond to the executive session, please?
Yes, Council met an executive session from 5:00 PM this evening until 5:30. Received a report from the chief solicitor regarding three pending matters. Donahue versus Luzerne County, Trump versus Pennsylvania Department of State et al., and Mackey versus, uh, State of Mackey versus Luzerne County. Uh, no decisions were made, uh, no deliberation took place.
Thank you. Uh, there are no recognitions or ceremony or part of missions for this evening. Additions or deletions from the voting session agenda?
Uh, Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
I'd like to remove the, uh, resolution of reprimand from the work session and put it on the voting session.
The resolution, that's number 10 on the...
Number 10.
On the, uh...
Work session.
Work session? Any issues with that from anyone? Do I hear anybody with any issues in that regard? If not, we'll make that number 10 then on the, uh, agenda that's in front of us for the voting session. Ms. Crocomal, do you have any information for us also?
For, oh, yes, uh, the, uh, issue with the flood protection, uh, authority. Please remove that. Uh, I received notice from the authority that, uh, they do not have the, uh, meet the criteria for, uh, the grant.
That's number three on our voting session agenda. And that was removed because of the fact that they do not have the, uh, proper credentials to do that. Anything else? Do we have a motion to approve the voting session agenda with the revisions as so stated?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Down to the motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement on majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Hough, make that motion.
So moved.
Second, Urban.
Who's that?
Urban.
Okay, Mr. Urban. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Sadeen.
Okay.
Second, Senator.
Very good. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition?
No, Walter.
Uh, Mr. Griffith? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Public comment on voting session agenda items, please. It's open for the public on agenda items, please.
Hi, this is Elizabeth Hartman. Hang on one second.
Yeah, Ms. Hartman, if you could get some feedback there. The feedback has gone, uh, Ms. Hartman, are you on?
I am, I'm going to walk away from my, my main computer.
Okay.
So that there's no feedback. Can you hear me now?
Now that's better, thank you.
Okay, um, I'd like to talk about the item that was just moved, number 10, Walter Griffith and his reprimands.
Okay, go ahead.
So, in this day and age of technology, I feel that every council member should have social media to keep the constituents informed on what's going on. We all know Walter's history, where he was pushed out and, and whatever, and the constituents voted him back in because he is honest and he tells it like it is. And we don't want him silenced. We want to know what's going on. We don't, unless you're in these meetings and the old folks can't get in these meetings, because I've been trying to help people for three days to get into this meeting, they can't get in to, to voice their opinion. This pandemic has us all locked down where we're not being heard, okay? So, I am totally against a reprimand for Walter. We need all of you, get social media accounts, tell us what's going on. Be the voice for the people. Be the voice to help fix this county, because this county needs fixing. Things are broken, agencies are broken. We need you guys, we voted home rule to get rid of three people that weren't helping us. We voted so we had 12 of you to help us. Your constituents are begging. Look at stuff, look at the agencies. Get social media, please, respond to us. We get emails from everywhere, you know, federally and stuff, begging for money, and nobody wants to listen to what you have to say. Walter listens. That's all we're asking from you guys, listen. Open up, let's get some transparency, so we know what's going on. Because my mother's 87, she can't even find Channel 9 on Service Electric to watch it. So, that's the end of my statement, and thank you for your time, but I'm here to say that I don't think he should be reprimanded. He's trying to help keep us informed on what's going on. And I made comments about gender. I'm a woman, I made comments on gender and who I voted for, okay? And how disappointed I was that I picked the wrong people by what I've been seeing. So, somehow some of my comments got mixed in with his comments, but I take full responsibility for gender. I'm a woman, and I voted for women, and I voted for young people. And I made a mistake. I went to all the meetings and listened to platforms. And when I listened to the platforms, what they were saying before they were elected were one thing, and now that they're sitting in the chair, they're doing something different. So, that ends my comment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Mr. Manta's here.
Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to echo on the same statement that that woman just made. I think that the people that are sitting on council that are hurting the public by this ridiculous thing that they passed, you people have to look at yourself in the mirror and say, "I voted to put my knee on the neck of Luzerne County taxpayers." And this enough is enough. If you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. And like she said, we saw the agendas of all the people that were, that were running for county council, and I am so disappointed in the county council people that got elected that are not fighting for the people like Walter is. Walter should be commended for what he's doing. He brought up the rain tax, he brought up all these bills, and, and, and people can't see this. People can't see that the man is trying to help the people in the county. I wish they would get that through their, excuse my French, thick heads and see this. Don't keep voting him down on all this stuff because of the fact that he's a Republican. Well, what could I tell you? I mean, the Republican Party was turning their back on Mr. Griffin, and I'll tell you what, I am so disappointed. So, every one of the people that voted no to put that penalty on the tax, should look at themselves in the mirror and say, "I voted to put my knee on the neck of the people in Wyoming Valley," just like the rain tax. You voted that down, Walter brought that up. Come on, people, I mean, you know, i- i- it just seems that the county council should be for the people. The, the plaque sits in the office that we're not allowed to go into because of a pandemic. So let's put this in your mind. It's "we, the people," and believe me, when it comes voting time next time, a lot of people are going to be surprised of who's going to run. Thank you.
Other members of the public?
Chairman McGinley?
Mr. Nat, go ahead.
Um, in the interest of Luzerne County residents, I would strongly oppose this proposed resolution of reprimand. Measures nothing short of trying to silence the voice of the people who placed county councilman Walter Griffin there to begin with. To move forward with this will only solidify the argument of the much-needed change in Luzerne County politics. The First Amendment is the target here in the Constitution. In my passing this week, I had the pleasure of meeting a Polish immigrant family of four who lived in Lake Ariel who ma- migrated into the United States in 1993. As could the father of America was the optimum experience they were expecting when they arrived. The father explained it has not failed him or his family in one aspect or another. He says he compared the kind of this country he left, which he had in place, the governing body, or nothing short of mafia-heavy-handed tactics would make it exceedingly difficult for anyone who openly opposed the hierarchy. They could essentially starve you and your family to death if you not go along with their agendas. He said when arriving in the United States, it was like going from a dark place to an enlightened land of opportunity. He would have expected thanking God for his wisdom and his decision to come to this country. Aye. Right on that, can personally relate to this man's life experience if anyone knows my circumstance. Just the events that transpired last county council meeting is an example. When I attempted to comment on agenda's items, it specific the elimination of 10% penalty through December 1st, 2020, it appeared as though I was being silenced. Chairman McGinley responded it was due to something on the technical end from my house. Contrarily, during the non-agenda segment for co- public comment, prior to agenda items, I expressed my opinions without any technical difficulties. Long story short, if the Luzerne County citizens placed him, county councilman Walter Griffin in office, so the voice of the taxpayers could be heard, I truly do not believe this attempt at scalding him is going to do any good, and quite frankly, it believes it is a total waste of valuable time when other important matters should be being resolved during these meetings. This is my position. I thank you for listening in.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Uh, yes, John Toshowski.
What's your last name, John?
John Toshowski, Wilkes-Barre.
Okay, I, it wasn't clear to me what your last name is, but, uh, thank you, go ahead.
Toshowski, okay. Uh, I just want to comment on the Walter Griffin re- reprimand, actually, this is more of a question. Uh, is this really over internet memes? Like, is that what the real problem is? Because I, I, I don't understand, like, could somebody answer me that before I keep going? Is this over internet memes?
I believe it's in regards to Facebook.
Yes, internet.
Okay, yes, thank you. Like, that, that, really, if you have that much of a problem, you might need to get out of politics. That, that's very, that wasn't very that out of line, you know? You guys had a political disagreement, it happens. He, that's, you know, if you want to fight his free speech, you shouldn't be able to try to silence somebody, you should fight him with your own free speech. You know, make a meme about him if you have a problem with it, but, you know, this is a waste of time that you're going to reprimand somebody over internet meme that, of them using their free speech. It just, you know, I don't know, I just don't think this county has, has, people in this county seem to have a problem with free speech. That's all it has, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? In the public?
Ryan Shiner?
Go ahead, Mr. Shiner.
The county council bylaws have many items in them, uh, that were put in there specifically for certain people at the time. Those people being Rick Morelli, Stephen A. Urban, and Kathy Dobash. There are some other items in here that need to be removed, as we found out recently, uh, regarding the ability to vote, and taking that away from elected officials because they're tardy for a meeting, because they've been on the phone, they didn't, they didn't stay connected, and so on. To continue with these items, I, I, I think is, is a big mistake. I think the bylaws need to be looked at and put in a proper perspective with respect for all the people. Uh, Mr. McGinley, you for one, you constantly interrupt council members, uh, members of the public, you talk over us, you correct us as though we're in your classroom, but nobody says anything, we let it go. And I think if, if there's somebody putting something on Facebook, um, you know, I, I, I think that's just what you have to live with these days. This is the social media we have, and it's what's happening. And the people that have brought this, uh, resolution, I realize school is about to start, but obviously they're back, going to be, be repeating first grade again. Um, let's move on, let's take this off, and let's start acting like adults and deal with what goes on. And if you can't deal with it, then you need to just, you know, resign your position and move away. Now, I do have another, a question here, um, Mr. DeLuca said that in the executive session, there was discussion on the, uh, the Mackey case. I was under the impression that was settled when we agreed on a, a $3 million settlement. Why is that still going on in discussion?
Mr. DeLuca, do you want to respond to that?
Um, I mean, it was an executive session topic, I, that's the whole point of the executive session. We, uh, county council is permitted to have conversations related to matters that, uh, cannot be discussed in public. Um, I don't even know how to answer that, to be honest. It was a, uh, I can't say anything about what, what was discussed in executive session, that's the whole point.
Oh, I, I understand that, but, so it's not settled? Is that what you're saying by discussing the executive session, that the case is not settled? It's still an ongoing lawsuit?
Let's be clear. The court has not accept the settlement. The matter, the litigation is still ongoing.
That's my question, thank you.
All right, anyone else in the public?
Hi, my name is Maureen Darta from Wilkes-Barre.
Go ahead.
It seems to me that so many of you individuals, elective officials, are getting out of hand. And it is time for many, majority of you guys to go. I'm calling for immediate rec- or immediate recognition for you and Mr. Mobster Timothy McGinley and County Manager David Pedri for the abuse of taxpayers' money and the murder of Shaheed Mackin. It happened on your watch, and you guys have a blood on your hands. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Okay, moving on then. First item of business, approve the minutes from the July 28th meeting, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second, Walter.
Radel, second by Mr. Griffith on the question. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition?
No, Urban.
Mr. Urban?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, abstentions? None heard, motion carries, hold business. Moving on to the back page, please. Motion to adopt the ordinance of adopting the 2021 Long Range Operational Fiscal and Capital Plan for Luzerne County. Do we have a motion?
President.
Sheila.
Mr. Snee and Mr. and Ms. Sadeen, on the question.
On the question, Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make an amendment to the capital plan. I would like to, um, I would like to remove the $100,000 for the airport fuel tank, the $50,000 for the airport masonry repair, uh, from the capital plan for the Wyoming Valley Airport. Um, I feel it's appropriate to pull that money out until we get either a, uh, a board of aviation plan from the airport, or at least some accountability from that board as to what, what is going on in the, uh, in the airport over there, and what, what are their actual needs. Uh, that airport fuel tank has been on a pending since 2016. They haven't used it because we've been waiting for the plan. I think that money should go back into the capital plan in case we need it for, uh, emergency repairs in the county, which would come in beneficial rather than have it on hold over in the capital plan, just waiting for use without the, uh, proper authorization for that yet. Um, I also want to, in my amendment, I also want to remove the, uh, I think it's $100,000 for the upgrade on the lighting for the Cross Valley Expressway.
That capital? Let's, if we can, let's take them one at a time, so we don't get...
Sure.
So the first, first thing deals with the airport and, uh, what I call the 44 Airport. $100,000 and $50,000, is that correct, Mr. Griffith?
That's correct.
Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Mr. Urban? On the question?
Mr. McGinley, could, Mr. McGinley, this is Dave Pedri, could our, could our engineer speak to that project? I want to give, uh, have him review, uh, respond to that.
Yeah, on, on the question, you certainly can.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Plesh, county engineer, could you please respond to, uh, the concerns regarding the, the 44 Airport this time?
Uh, yes, currently the, um, master plan has been accepted, or the Bureau of Aviation, and the gas tank, uh, is, project is definitely being done. Uh, they have given us some state or federal funding for it, and the money that is in the capital plan will be used for the match. Uh, that project is something that has been on hold until the master plan is complete, and it is now, uh, complete and accepted after a few comments went back and forth. Uh, so now the project is moving forward, I think, believe the grant is in place, and they're finalizing the grant, but we have to have the match in order to get the grant. Uh, otherwise, they're going to pass on it, and we're going to have to pay for the entire fuel system, which was down sometime in 2019 for a bit, and it caused major headaches, uh, at the airport for us. They were driving, they were flying to Wilkes-Barre, uh, to get fuel and coming back. So it was, it's a dire project, but, and one of the, the main reason it was been on hold is because of the funding. We just did not have it, and they said, "Master plan's complete, we'll write the grant, we'll get some state money, but you have to have a match." And that capital plan money is the match. Uh, it would, uh, not be a benefit to the, the airport or the county if we reneged on that right now and tell the Bureau that we don't want the money, we don't want the grants that's being written for it. That would just not work.
Mr. 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 McGinley, uh, Mr. Plesh, can you please provide that master plan to county council, um, uh, tomorrow? We could email that to them, please?
I'm sorry, did they say that again?
Could you please email the master plan to county council tomorrow, please?
Sure.
How about the reporting of the masonry?
Pretty large file, I'll have, I can probably get it loaded up to the, uh, uh, county website, and you can all look at it.
All right, well, please, also, please, please review it with the solicitors offices if there's anything of, I know there's, there's numerous aviation guidelines, if there's anything that needs to be confidential regarding the aviation guidelines, I know that's part of it. Uh, you know, if, if need to review it with them, but either get it to county council or post on the website tomorrow, please, so council can be aware of what's going on with that.
Okay.
How about the reporting of the masonry?
Uh, the masonry is something that they may consider. Uh, I don't believe it's currently, uh, something that can get grant funding for, but, uh, we were waiting until other needs at the airport, for example, the, uh, barrel roof on the main, uh, hangar was in, uh, leaking and needed a major repair, and that was just completed. But the power next to it, uh, had some structural damage, and there's some other masonry sections that need to be done. Uh, we have been holding on it because there was been other major, uh, major but more important projects going on, and we were sitting on it. But at this point, uh, we have to get a design, uh, consultant involved to finalize it. Um, so that's just going to happen too, I, if you would like to take the $50,000 back, I guess you can, but, uh, it's project is going to be done, it's just that there was other items ahead of it, that's all.
Anyone else with questions?
Yeah, can I ask a question here?
Sure.
You know, when you look at comments like this from a county council's perspective, you know, how can you state that you're waiting for the completion of a master plan when you have it complete, but that masonry project is, is pending, on hold? You know, pending the completion of the master plan itself, so if you already have the master plan complete, that really can't be pending for the master plan. So there's, it's a contradictory statement in a sense, so, you know, I, I mean, I would hope that you, you clean up the language in the future.
When the capital plan was submitted, we didn't have the master plan, I believe, but I, listen, it doesn't, I, I apologize, we'll get the master plan to county council either way.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, when was the, uh, cap, the, uh, master plan, uh, approved or sent to, uh, Mr. Plesh? Recently?
I, I have no idea. Mr. Pedri, do we have any timetable on that place?
I'm not going to lie to you, I, I haven't reviewed it, I, I don't even remember seeing it.
Anyone else with questions?
Uh, one, one more question, Mr. McGinley, if I could get Mr., either Mr. Pedri or Mr. Plesh to give us a report on, do we make, uh, is there any revenue, uh, positive revenue coming out of the airport, or is it, it, based on what we lease? Uh, I know it's a lot of expense to keep that airport going, uh, for, uh, Skorboa and his, his, uh, airport there that he's actually running and paying us a lease payment for. Other than the lease payment that we get from Mr. Skorboa, is there any other revenues that we realize from that airport? Or do we just basically, uh, administer repairs? And do we make a profit?
I can kind of speak to that, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave, go, go ahead, I'm just saying, I was a, I was a council liaison many years ago. Well, um, first of all, you know, that, the, the 44 Airport, Wyoming Valley Airport, as it's called, I see that as a total treasure for just Luzerne County and our citizens, or they're on the west side. And, um, it is, it, it costs an awful lot of money to keep that even going, and there, there isn't a lot of revenue generated out of that. From what I recall, that, that, that line item for the fuel tank, that is a way to actually build revenue for the facility, because then people could actually fill up there at 44, would be more of a, of a destination. Now, I haven't served on that in like six, uh, six years or so, it's been a long time. But these are all improvements that, um, both line items, if, if we don't have them, we're looking at, at long-term, not have a viable airport there. And if, um, those of you familiar with it, we have that, that extra hangar space that was opened up a few years ago, and that's, that was a revenue generator, because now people actually pay to, to keep their airplanes there. And it's also a, a place that if, uh, if our area is a destination, people can fly their planes and they can store them out of the elements. So, um, I don't know if that helps out the, the general discussion of it all, but, um, I don't support either of these amendments, because I do see the long-term benefit, just, again, as, not as a regular citizen, but somebody who actually served there for a few years as the council liaison, just for all our people on the west side and all of Luzerne County.
Yeah, and I, I, just to be clear, Harry, I'm not, I'm not proposing to take the money out, because I don't feel that it's a worthwhile expenditure. I'm, I'm, I'm proposing to take it out, because I didn't realize that we had the money allocated for the master plan, because I haven't, we haven't, we didn't know there was a master plan accepted yet. So, I mean, I don't have a problem spending the money on something if we know that, for lack of a better term, that it's a shovel-ready project, but to hold money from 2016 until 2020 in a capital plan budget that we may need for something more important at the moment, I, I think would be beneficial.
No, well, I, I agree 100%.
Yep.
Thanks, thanks for looking under every cushion, you know, for, for submitting money for it. Thanks for looking under every cushion, you know, for some extra money for us, but I think what the biggest problem is, and this comes up every so often, I still don't think we have a full complement of advisory board members, and that has really been a problem, because that, that helps move things along over there. And again, obviously, the county sanctions, whatever the fixed base operator does. So these are good questions asked. I think it's good to get it out there and in the public, and if people listening in or are gonna read this in the paper eventually, if they want to serve on a, on a great board, take a look at the Wyoming Valley Airport Board.
I asked to be on that board and haven't gotten an answer yet.
Yep. Well, I don't want it well, so go for it.
Any other questions regarding Mr. Griffith's amendment?
Hey, I just wanted to state too, you know, like, I don't doubt that it's a treasure here in the county. I just expect open and truthful transparency from administration when it comes to projects, and, and, you know, make sure that the updates that we get are clean and accurate.
If not, we have a motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban, to take out of the capital budget monies that were assigned through the Wyoming Valley Airport, $100,000 for a fuel tank, and $50,000 for masonry repair or reporting.
Mr. McGinley, on the amendment, Brian Shiner.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what was said there.
I said, "On the amendment," this is Brian Shiner, I have a comment on the amendment, wasn't on the, on the agenda.
Go ahead.
Mr. Plush said that they approved their master plan. I would like to know when they approved it, because according to the website, they haven't had a meeting since September 19th of 2012.
The, that's an advisory board, they would not be approved of, that would be by the county and the state, I believe, Mr. Shiner. I don't think that the advisory board would involve in that approval.
They don't, they don't vote on the master plan?
No, I don't, they do not, they're an advisory board, they don't have any powers in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. McGinley, I'd like to make a motion to table this capital plan for two weeks.
We're not gonna vote on the amendment? We have a motion and a second on the amendment. Mr. DeLuca?
Oh, yeah, I was muted, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We have an amendment and a second, we had discussion on that. We're ready to vote, and now Mr. Urban made a motion to table.
I second the motion to table. Linda.
Okay, now we have a second also. Can we vote on the amendment, or we cannot vote on the amendment, or do we just immediately go to table?
Vote on the amendment, and then if motion to table is made after that, then vote on the motion to table at that time.
Okay. So we're voting on the amendment then, please. Everybody understand? And then immediately after that, we'll vote on the motion to table.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Snee.
There's a little confusion here. Is the master plan in place?
Master plan, I believe, Mr. Plush and Mr. Pedri, I believe what has been said is the master plan has been approved, and we do have a master plan for that airport. Is that correct or incorrect?
Larry, could you please explain to the term, council with the term "approved" means for master plan? Is that legislative action, or is that approved by the state, which is what, which is who is reviewing this? Could you please explain the master plan process for the 44 Airport?
The master plan is something that, to say, describes the course that the airport's gonna take over the next five to 10 to 15 years. Is it gonna be bigger, is it gonna be smaller? The, in order to get funding, you have to show what you're gonna do. They want to know how the airport's gonna change over time. So if you're gonna get larger, they're gonna say, "Okay, fine, we agree with what you're proposing, and we'll give you more funds because you have a need for it. If you're downsizing us, then we'll give you less funds, you don't really need that," that kind of stuff. So you hire an airport consultant.
Mr. Plush, who is "they"? Who is, who is, you said "they" give you funds. Could you please explain to county council who "they" are?
I'm sorry, this would be the State Bureau of Aviation and the Federal Bureau of Aviation. They provide us with funds, FAA or the BOA.
The question that Snee, who approves the plan?
We, well, basically, once you get it developed, we send it to the Bureau of Aviation for approval. When I say it's been approved, I'm saying the Bureau of Aviation has signed off on it.
So the Bureau of Aviation at the state has signed off on the plan?
I'm looking at an email now that's telling me, from what I'm reading, is that it's been approved.
Okay.
Unless I'm reading it wrong, I'll have to double-check first thing tomorrow, but I'm reading it, this is dated July 6, 2020, and it's from the planning manager with the Bureau of Aviation, and he's telling me, I'm reading it correctly, unless I'm missing something, that it's been approved. But I will double-check for sure, and I will get a copy of it and put on the website.
And that was July 6 of 2020, so is that correct?
That's the letter I'm reading, yes.
All right, Mr. Snee, did you hear that?
Thank you.
Okay. Back to the amendment. Mr. Griffith made the amendment, Mr. Urban made the second. We're voting on the amendment, and then we'll immediately go to the motion to table.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
I want to make a motion to table the amendment.
Well, you can make a motion, withdraw the amendment, you get a second, and the amendment's off the court. Is that easier?
Well, based on the fact that I don't really want to tie up the funding if the plan's been approved, but I actually want to see the plan that it has been approved. So, yes, I would think maybe that might be easier for me to pull my motion at this time.
Okay.
And we can go from there if you think that's easier.
I withdraw my second.
All right, so we don't have an amendment on the board, so we're going immediately to a table. Motion was made by Mr. Urban, second by Ms. Houck. Everybody clear on that?
On the question.
No questions, I'm tabling. No questions, Mr. Snee, it's either up or down. Either table or you don't. Okay? Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
No, to table.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel? Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Eight yes and three no.
Okay, the motion is tabled, will reappear two weeks from now, and that would be the last time we have a meeting scheduled prior to the date of September 1st, where that's the deadline for the plan as far as approval by council. Moving to number two, motion to approve a resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation in the matter of William J. Martin versus the county of Luzerne. Do we have a motion?
Sheila, so moved.
Ms. Sedman, do we have a second?
Second, McDermott.
Good. Got a motion and a second on the question.
Mr. McGinley, on the question.
Go ahead.
On the settlement, the, I guess the settlement's listed in the resolution is $9,000, I believe.
$9,115.
Okay, okay. The question that I have is regarding the, why the county hasn't responded to Mr. Martin back in 2016. I asked that question before, and I was told that there's an engineer or somebody that he contacted, maybe we could have eliminated the settlement if we would have contacted them. Can somebody answer why they didn't contact them?
Somebody have that information?
I can't answer that specifically. Unfortunately, I'm not an engineer, I'm just an attorney, but the information that I've received from opposing counsel is that he may have left a message with engineering. I can tell you that during the course of the litigation, that Larry Plush dealt with Mr. Martin, and Mr. Martin was, gave very positive feedback about his dealings with Mr. Plush. But I can't go back, I don't have any of that information, and there's no information of who exactly, or if he just left, who he exactly spoke to, or if he left a message.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, this thing started in 2001, and, you know, it's now 2020, which is almost 19 years ago, and, and some of the issues that are in his document that's submitted here through the plenary shows that there are clearly, you know, some communication errors with the administration. And I think maybe if the administration would have responded, we probably wouldn't even be sitting here making this decision today. That's just speculation on my part, but clearly, I think we could have, you know, maybe eliminated some of this by somebody in the administration in October 16, responding to the man, because it says, it says they, nobody even responded to him. So that's, that's my comment. I don't, I, you know, I don't, I just don't feel it was appropriate for us not to respond to him when he had a concern.
Anyone else?
I want to be clear, Mr. McGinley, in our answer, we did say that we did respond to him, and obviously allegations in the lawsuit, just that allegations to the proven in court, but it doesn't matter, either way.
So you did respond, so we did respond?
Here's, here's the reality. There were, since 2001, there were many individuals in the administration at the time that didn't respond to him and should have. The issue right now before council is whether or not we will resolve this litigation for the amount of $9,115. Otherwise, we'll be going to a hearing at the end of August, and a judge will decide if the county is liable, and if so, how much the county would be liable for.
But, I mean, I, this, this letter was dated December 27, 2018. I understand what you're saying, Ramilda, but this goes right to the incompetence level of the administration, when he says that he asked in October of 2016 for a correction of the problem, and nobody even responded to him as of December 27, 2018. I understand there are only allegations. If there has been a response, I'd like, I'd like to see those responses. But that's, again, I understand why we're here, so that's, that's my statement.
Okay. We have a motion from Ms. Sedman, seconded by Ms. McDermott. Roll call, please.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Your microphone might be muted.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good, thank you. Number three was removed from the agenda prior to us moving on here. We're down to number four on our agenda, was the motion to adopt ordinance, meaning the Luzerne County zoning map to resolve one parcel property, totally approximately 0.13 acres, Wyoming Borough, Lamarone Single Family Residence Zone, the Highway Business District 3 Zone. This was the ordinance that we had the public here on the mark to the commencement of the voting. Do we have a motion?
Present.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Urban, on the question. Any non-roll call, please?
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Moving down to number five, we have a motion to adopt a resolution for a county council member to the Blight of Property Review Committee. We have a motion to open up nominations.
Mr. McGinley, on the question. Before we have nominations?
Yeah, we have to get nominations first.
Okay.
Then we'll have, once we get through the nominations, then we'll come back to the resolution.
Mr. McGinley, it's Sheila. Could you ask, I think someone might have their mic on, it's making it very hard to hear with breathing or something.
If everyone would please mute their mics wherever possible, so we don't have the feedback, it does become difficult at times to hear. Thank you. Do we have a motion to open nominations?
So moved, Kendra.
Ms. Radel, do we have a second for Ms. Radel?
Second, Leon.
Very good. All in favor of opening nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. In opposition, any abstentions? Unheard, motion carries. Now we have, motions are now open. We have a position for a county council member to serve on the Blight of Property Review Committee. Do we have any nominations, please?
It's Linda, I nominate Harry Haas.
Mr. Haas is nominated by Ms. Houck. Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second.
Mr. Snee? Do we have any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations?
Motion closed by Mr. Vog. Do we have a second for Mr. Vog?
Second.
Mr. Radel, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. In opposition, any abstentions? Nominations are closed. Now, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Mr. Haas to the Blight of Property Review Committee?
So moved.
Who said?
Urban.
Mr. Urban and Mr. Snee? On the question, Mr. Griffith?
Yes, on the question. The agenda, or the ordinance that was drafted for this committee is different than what the bylaws say. The bylaws say that the council member's elected for two years, but the ordinance says it's a four-year term. So which one are we gonna follow, the ordinance or the bylaws?
I can speak to that, Mr. Chairman.
The ordinance has precedence over the bylaws by Mr. DeLuca.
Ramilda, you're gonna have to, could you help me on this one? I didn't know, I didn't specifically prepare that, I don't, I don't know if Ramilda's on.
I could help you on that, I could help you on that, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Haas, until I pull it up.
Go ahead.
The resolution.
Yeah, the reason behind that was to, I mean, there's only one council member who serves on this committee, and the reasoning was to stagger it, because it's a, it's a five-member board, and we wanted to stagger it for other people who wanted to serve. That's why the bylaws reflect that.
I think that's for the bylaws. Well, when you were appointed several years ago, Mr. Haas, you staggered the terms at that point, maybe you didn't serve a full four years probably, right?
Exactly.
He did not. I'm looking at it now.
But the ordinance does say four years. So what do we, Mr. Prokomo, the ordinance, is that trumped the bylaw?
I would, I would say that typically that would be the case, but if there's anything else in the administrative code that requires you, you know, I mean, this is one of those situations where, you know, it's the reason an agenda goes out early, with due respect to everyone here, is so we have time to really take a close look at issues like this. Luzerne County government is a very complicated government. We have administrative codes, we have bylaws, we have the charter itself, there's not case law on this, as there is with the Pennsylvania County Code, so it makes it extremely difficult, and it's probably the main reason that you have three solicitors on, on the call, because it makes it difficult to, on the fly, come up with solicitors on, on the call, because it makes it difficult to, on the fly, come up with the right answer or the best possible answer. There's interactions with Luzerne County government that don't, we don't see in any other type of government. It's a, it's a unique home rule government and typically, a municipal body could, at any point, override any of its own rules. In this case, if the administrative code has something that would prohibit it, it's something that, that needs to, we need to take a look at. So, I would not personally be able, be comfortable with giving a legal opinion as I, as I sit here without taking a closer look at it. I don't know, Ramilda, you may be more familiar with this specific issue, but this is why, if at all possible, instead of making amendments on the fly, as we sit here at a meeting, changing things without giving the office of law some sort of advance, it's perilous for us to practice laws. And I have no, I cannot give you an opinion as I sit here.
Well, my, my recollection is that the original ordinance that adopted stated that the member shall serve four years. So the ordinance that was adopted is actually law. Since we all know that ordinances are the law. I'm sorry, I'm getting feedback, so just bear with me for a moment. So, the original ordinance for the Blighted Property Committee indicates a term of four years. And that's why we are using four years. We're consistent with the original ordinance that was passed. If that isn't consistent with the bylaws, then we have to review that original ordinance. But right now, as the resolution is written, it's consistent with the original ordinance that was passed, for four years.
Thank you.
So I, I would say that they probably have to change their bylaws, but the other issue is if we put Harry Haas as the nominee and he's only elected for two years, he can't serve for four. He is grandfathered out, so he can't even run. So how do we do that? Well, we have to obviously declare a vacancy, correct?
At that point.
Declare a vacancy when his term of office would be concluded.
Right, but more important, more importantly, we have a citizen who is sitting on this committee, who is supposed to be sitting there for four years, and we have him down for two on the, on the agenda for his appointment and his resolution. So that's in, in contrast to what the chart, the ordinance says. So somewhere along the line, we have to let the citizen know that his term is a four-year term, not a two-year term.
Well, we can look at that, but we're, right now, we're working on this particular appointment for a council member, but.
Councilman Griffith, who's the, who's the citizen? Could you give me the name?
Uh, let me look at, see if I could find that for you.
Or you can email it to me. You can email it to me afterwards and then we'll look into that. But to answer to the question is that this resolution is consistent with the original ordinance, which was passed in his law.
I think it's Andrew Holter or Scott Lindy, which one? I'm not sure.
No, no, Mr. Lindy represents the redevelopment authorities, Mr. Holter.
Okay, so it's Mr. Holter then?
Mr. Holter, everybody. Mr. Holter.
All right, I'll look into it.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Urban, Mr. Schnee, appoint Mr. Haas to the Blighted Property Review Committee. Any other questions? Roll call?
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Ms. Sedman? Microphone, maybe?
Yep. Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. Moving down to number six.
If I could, thanks everybody for the confidence, if I, if I could, and just remember, you know, my term ends in a year and a half, so I encourage some of the colleagues here, there are currently certain, maybe some who wish to be elected to county council to consider on all these posts, a valuable committee, and it's been really difficult with the COVID, but looking to do great things on behalf of, of a big issue here in Luzerne County. So thanks again for the confidence.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to number six, motion to approve the Luzerne Schoolkill County web budget for the program year, fiscal year 2020, in accordance with the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Do we have a motion?
Mr. McGinley, that was tabled last week, I believe?
Yep.
So we have to make a motion to take it off the table, correct?
You're, you're 100% correct, Mr. Griffith.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Take it off the table?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Griffith, do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, Haas.
Second, Mr. Haas? All in favor of taking off the table indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition?
No. Linda.
One. Any abstentions?
Schnee.
Who knows? Any abstentions? Motion's taken off the table. Now, do we have a motion to approve the budget as presented?
Mr. McGinley, Sheila, what, we supposed to have a representative?
We do have a representative, but we have to get the motion on the table first. And we do have, Ms. Lenahan is, is with us this evening and some other people from that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Do we have a motion to approve the budget as presented?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second, Mr. Griffith?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? On the question, I'll ask the, Ms. Lenahan to come on and explain the budget a little bit and then she will be available for questions. Ms. Lenahan?
Thank you.
Can you open? Okay, your microphone's open, very good. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley and council. My name is Patty Lenahan. I'm the executive director of the Luzerne Schoolkill Workforce Board. Also on the phone with me is Steve Trednik. He is the director of accounting services. And I just wanted to give a chance, an opportunity to talk about the workforce board, our responsibilities as administrator and fiscal oversight for contracting, monitoring of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funding. This funding is for programs and services that are offered at the Pennsylvania Career Links in our workforce area, Luzerne and Schoolkill Counties. We have three comprehensive sites. These are free services to the public and it's based on the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. We're governed by federal and state regulations. The workforce board is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and we have five staff. Our annual budget, it changes and depending on the allocations from the workforce dollars, we also apply for other ancillary grants throughout the year. And I know that the exhibits are in your package and if you were to refer to Exhibit A, which is all of the funding that comes into our area, and if you, if you look at the top left-hand side, starting with adult, youth and dislocated worker, those fundings come from the Workforce Act. The next two columns, TANF Youth and EARN, they are welfare dollars that also come into the program to help those to become gainfully employed if they are, have a problem with workforce. The next is Rapid Response, that is to help businesses that are going out of business or in a layoff status. We help dislocated workers and, and the employers to try to save the business from going under. And the remaining five titles, they are ancillary grants that we apply for. Very proud to say that we are in the third year of our state local internship program grants. We have teacher in the workplace, business education, apprenticeship, and recently, re-entry grant that we received funding for. So we're here to help local businesses with their workforce needs. We support programs aimed, aimed at providing career awareness. We provide training to job seekers and students. And then regarding the total amount, you'll see in the right-hand corner, 9.3 million. And Exhibit B, which is on the following page, is the board's budget for running the operation. So we, we offer you the 2019 budget, which is in the left-hand column. We compare it for this year's anticipated budget with a 3% increase. We explain the variance, the difference between last year and this year, and our proposed bottom line amount at the, at the bottom. We tried to break out salaries, benefits, and different operating expenditures in the left-hand column. And this is for July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. I'll take on any questions that you might have.
All right, do we have questions for Ms. Lenahan, please?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley, I do.
Go ahead, Ms. Houck.
Okay, on the budget, Ms. Lenahan, the line item for salaries, you have a $9,883 increase, 3% increase. How many salaries are included in that?
Four salaries, four staff members are included in that amount.
Okay, so the proposed budget then is almost a $10,000 increase for four people. And then what would be the increase for 31% in materials and supplies? What is the reason for that large increase?
I'm gonna have Steve Trednik, my director of accounting services, to break that down for you. Steve? Thank you. Sure.
Thank, thank you, Patty. The $3,100 increase is for replacement of laptop computers and printer as well as a cell phone. With the staff working remotely this year, they will be needing, you know, replacement of their laptops, a potential printer for individual's house, as well as possible cell phone.
Okay. Were there, were any of the employees furloughed temporarily during the pandemic, you know, back in March when, when we were shut down?
No, we all remain working and remotely.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Someone else had a question?
Yes, Sheila.
Go ahead.
I would think, Ms. Lenahan, that you have been really busy at this time. And are you getting any money from the federal or state government, particularly because of the pandemic and the number of businesses that are closing, people losing their jobs?
Thank you for that question. Pennsylvania applied for a pandemic national emergency grant. And when the Commonwealth applies for funding in the workforce division, this is strictly for the state workforce board, they reached out to the local workforce boards, which there's 22 workforce boards across the Commonwealth in Pennsylvania. And so therefore, they asked for $21 million and received a little less than $7 million. And our area will receive, we haven't received it yet, we will receive monies based on janitorial services, customer service services, and security. So we're in the process of actually responding to the Commonwealth's request for a budget. They have allocated in and around $23,000 to $24,000 per Career Link to hire one individual that would allow us to either help with, when we, when we do finally open to the public for cleaning services, security, and customer service.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Lenahan?
Urban here. Would that money be then put into budget and the budget amended?
Well, the web budget is, is stationary. What is more fluid is the Exhibit A. That, that constantly changes. So today, you, I'm just showing you the whole picture in Exhibit A and the web budget is, is in, 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 in that document, under the right side, you'll see, I mean, on the left side, you'll see web, administrative funds and program funds. That totals the $886,330. What will remain stationary is Exhibit B. That will not fluctuate.
Other questions?
Mr. McGinley?
All right.
Patty, thank you for attending the meeting to help us understand. It's Walter Griffith, I just want to identify who you're speaking to, so you know.
Okay, thank you, Walter.
You're welcome. Under your Exhibit B, under salaries, I was gonna ask the same question as Ms. Houck. So, to be clear, are you, do you only have four employees that you supervise totally? Is, is that all that the Workforce Investment Board moderners?
Well, there's actually five staff to the board. It is, there is one person that has duties for oversight of the Luzerne County Career Link offices. And her salary, Christine Jensen, is not incorporated in the web budget. Her salary would be paid for through all the funding sources on the top of Exhibit A, based on her contribution to Hazelton office for two days a week, she's in Wilkes-Barre three days a week. So her salary is split between all the partners in the Career Link offices in Hazelton and Wilkes-Barre at a 60-40 split.
Okay. Okay, so that, so that you, you only oversee the, the salaries are only for the four people, just, just so I'm clear on that as well. Thank, thank you for, thank you for clarifying that.
Correct.
And the, and the money, the money, none of the money comes from the local government as far as like city or local or county, right? It all comes state and federal funding, correct?
It's all state and federal funding, correct.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. That's, that helps me understand. And, and Mr. McGinley, I really think that we need to have our liaison, whoever that is. If, if we have someone who can't attend those meetings, maybe we could get someone to be actively attending that.
Anyone else with questions?
Ms. Lenahan, Harry Haas here, thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Question I always ask every year, ever since I've been on county council, is the contracted services. I, I would have liked to see those itemized. Could you, could you speak to that, nearly $400,000 worth of expenditures, about what that actually covers?
We sure can. I'm gonna have Steve speak to that, please.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you, Mr. Haas. That covers memberships for the local chambers, our contracted service with, with our fiscal operations. We have a contact with service act at the management that does our fiscal operations, our human resources, our IT, covers our legal services, our accounting, we have to have a, five, an account, excuse me, an audit done every year for our audit services. Covers, you know, various insurances that we have with, with the web office and the Career Link office, payroll, payrolls.
Okay. Anyone else?
More or less all, more or less all administrative dollars going for those funds, going for those activities.
Anyone else with questions?
Yeah, Urban here again. Those audits that you mentioned, are they forwarded over to county council for review?
I'm sorry, Ms. Urban, I missed the beginning of your question.
The, the audits themselves that you have, are they ever forwarded over to the county or for county council to review?
Yes, they are.
They were, Ms. Urban?
Are they posted?
I believe they're posted on our website, but I also make it a point to send them out in, I believe they were sent in March of this year. So I'll be happy to forward them again. We receive clean audits for the past at least seven years that I've been director, six years. seven years that I've been director, six years.
Other questions? If not, we have a motion by Mr. Griffiths, second by Mr. Perry, to approve the budget as presented. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Uh, no.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Howke?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinnley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Thank you. Moving down to number seven. Motion to introduce an ordinance to amend the 2020 position budget legislatively authorizing the elimination and creation of positions in Division Twenty, Department forty-one fourteen, Budget and Finance Administration. We have a motion.
Walter, so moved.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Linda.
Ms. Howke? On the question. On the question.
Uh, this is Leanne.
Yes.
Is this, it, it reminds me of what we already voted on at the last meeting. Um, is it repetitious of that?
Uh, we took a look at that. Um, it's, although it's the same subject, uh, it's not exactly the same. Uh, even though we had given the opinion that, uh, this would violate the charter, um, these apparently are multiple other attempts to, uh, try to do the same thing. Um, so our legal opinion has not changed. And, uh, my understanding is it cost about a grand to put these in a newspaper, and there's an ordinance like this. Um, and, uh, again, our, our opinion has not changed. This is, this would be a clear violation of the charter, clear violation of the separation of power. It goes against what the charter was, uh, was brought forward to, to do, which was to take, uh, responsibility for jobs out of the hands of elected officials. Um, and, uh, I think Mr. Griffith should know that better than anyone. Um, opinion's the same, it'll be the same in two weeks, it'll be the same in a month.
Someone has, uh, some back, some feedback, please check your mic. Current, did you get your answer?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anyone else with questions?
Yes, I have, I have questions regarding what, what Mr. DeLuca just said. First of all, I understand that's the Office of Law's opinion. However, the Administrative Code clearly states what that is, and that was passed legislatively by the council. There was no reconsideration motion made. That is the, the Administrative Code is the law. So if the Office of Law wants to give us an opinion that says we're not supposed to follow the Administrative Code, that's fine. I would like to have that in writing as well. If that, whatever their opinion is, is what part of the charter we're actually violating by having this put in the Administrative Code, at some point, the manager should have challenged the Administrative Code when it was sent to him, that ordinance to amend. He did not. So if there is a challenge regarding the charter, as to whether the charter is, uh, invite, we're violating the charter here, uh, I'd like to get a written opinion from the Solicitor's Office to find out what that actual violation in the charter is. Uh, also, the Administrative Code was duly passed by council. It is the law of the county. The county Office of Law cannot tell the council that they have to violate the Administrative Code. So unless we could get some opinion from the Office of Law that states why they're saying that, I, I will continue to bring these ordinances to the county because it's the right thing for us to do legislatively. They are legislatively authorized positions, and therefore, they should be changed legislatively by council. And if there's another opinion to that, I certainly would respect that opinion, but I'd like to see it.
I,
I, I could answer that. If, I, you know, Mr. Griffith, this is your opinion, and this is not even, we don't even have a crisis here because this is not the opinion of the majority of council, uh, even. This is, this is an opinion of the minority of council. Uh, you have already seen that, uh, a majority of council, at least at this point, uh, has subscribed to the, to the opinion of the Office of Law, yet you are still bringing these, uh, these motions for ordinances up, costing the, the county a thousand bucks a pop. Uh, this is a situation where you disagree with what, uh, the opinion of the Office of Law is, um, but a majority of council does not.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
Any sort, and we, we, if, let me finish, we don't even have a crisis, uh, at this point because we don't have a majority of council, uh, that, that disagrees. We have you who disagree. Uh, and I would, I would tell you, uh, to answer, uh, your contention that just because the county manager, whoever it was at the time, may or may not have disagreed with, uh, with the Administrative Code as it was adopted, um, your contention is that that means that, that the Administrative Code is law, even if it violates the charter. And we already, we had discussions, uh, with Mr. Cross, um, uh, who agrees that certain of these, uh, um, uh, amendments could be an actual change in the form of government. And I would, uh, I would agree with that, that, um, that changes, uh, to the separation of powers would actually be a change in the form of government that would require a new government study commission. Just to believe that it's something that should be done, uh, doesn't mean it's so. And I, I, I don't know how many more times you're going to present these motions that are costing the county a thousand bucks a pop, but our opinion has not changed. My opinion has not changed for, since two thousand twelve. Uh, um, and the opinion of Office of Law is the same. So maybe if you wanna create, uh, a, a home rule charter crisis, uh, lobby some of your, uh, colleagues to get a majority of council to agree with you, uh, that the Office of Law is wrong. Uh, and then at least you actually really have, uh, a crisis here. But right now, you're just wasting money.
Well, first of all, I'd like to see the thousand dollar a pop bill for that. You could send that to me, Vito. Uh, secondly, um, the Administrative Code is what it is, it says what it says. The home rule charter, nowhere can I see in plain English, but of course, the Office of Law can certainly send me something in writing that says why they feel the charter would be violated by following the Administrative Code. Uh, we, I personally think the council has the authority to pass a budget. The manager has the authority to present a budget, and council approves it. Somewhere between, we're not saying he can't create a position. All we're saying is we're approving it. Once he creates it, that's fine. But come December or October, when he sends his new budget in, if we didn't approve it, we have no obligation to fund that position. In, in October, if he submits another budget in October of this year, we have no obligation as a council to fund those positions if we didn't vote to legislatively authorize them in the first place. That's my position. And if you wanna send me something in writing, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna belabor the point because as you say, it's my opinion against the council's, or council of law's position. I get it. One of the things that you fail to remember is I was actually on the Charter Study Commission. So I know exactly why they wrote it. So you could go ahead and opine on anything you wish. All I'm saying is that that is what the law says. The Administrative Code says legislatively authorized positions. Therefore, you need an ordinance to amend that.
Um,
Mr. Griffith, you, you understand that, 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 that the council cannot, uh, uh, adopt an Administrative Code that violates the charter or amends the charter? I mean, you'd agree with me with that, right?
No, what I would agree, what I would agree with you is when we passed that Administrative Code amendment, that did not violate the charter. What it did was it enhanced the charter as the Administrative Code is supposed to. So therefore, and nobody said it violated the charter when we passed it. Nobody.
Well, that, that doesn't mean it doesn't violate. There's no charter police, that, that's what you failed to recognize. There's not a charter policeman. Excuse me?
We have no representant, representation on council.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
We don't have any representation on council when we submit an amended Administrative Code ordinance to tell us that that's a violation of the charter. We didn't have that.
Okay, Ms. Sedman, I think you had a question.
I don't know even what to say to that. I, I,
Okay, Ms. Sedman?
Yes, Walter. When I read this at home, I said, I think we did this two weeks ago. And are you saying, Walter, that your opinion is correct as compared to our three solicitors?
Yes.
A, a couple times I took your opinion and went to Jim Haggerty. And we were already, were always right. And you were only at the beginning of the Charter Study Program.
Yeah, right, Sheila. You weren't even there, you weren't even there.
I wasn't there, I wasn't elected to it, but I, I know what Jim told me.
Anyone else with questions? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Griffiths, second by Ms. Howke. Introduce the motion for the ordinance amending the two thousand twenty position budget legislatively authorizing the elimination and creation of positions, Division Twenty, Department forty-one fourteen, Budget and Finance Administration. Roll call, please.
Ms. Radell?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Absolutely no.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffiths?
Absolutely yes.
Mr. Haas?
Hey, you're funny, Walter.
Thanks, Bob.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. McGinnley?
No.
Three yes, eight no.
Motion fails. Moving down to number eight.
Mr. McGinnley, if I could?
Yes.
If I could on that issue, please, sir.
Mr. Haas, go ahead.
I, I don't agree with, I, I don't agree with this particular issue. However, Mr. Griffith has a tremendously valid point. And that is, the power of the purse belongs squarely with the, with the council. And what we've seen, we've seen abuses in that through the years, through transfers, and, and other kinds of things, that really, we have no recourse except at, at that budget time. And so, again, I understand where he's coming from in spirit, but the specific issue, I, I don't agree with this. But I, I think, I don't think it's a, a violation of the charter. And really, when you look at the people that are, are listening tonight, all the citizens, they're wondering, where do we go? Where do we go when we have a government that, that runs away from the people? And again, not saying that that's necessarily happening, but there have been some decisions that, it's out of council's hands. Well, Walter, I believe, and I don't wanna speak for the man, what he's trying to do is to put that, um, power squarely where it belongs, and that's with the council. Thank you.
Okay. Moving down to number eight. Motion to introduce the ordinance to amend the two thousand twenty position budget legislatively authorizing the elimination and creation of positions, Division Eighty, Public Defender, Department forty-one fifty-two, Public Defender. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? On the question?
So the, the, just to put a fine point on our discussion. So if council votes to, to no on these ordinances, we are theoretically telling the manager in October, we are not going to approve that money into that budget, into the upcoming budget. That is actually what we're saying when we say no to these ordinances. Unless somebody can say that we are actually violating the Administrative Code other than their opinion or showcase law, that is the law. So if we are telling the manager that come October, there's no way we can fund these two positions that are in this budget in the, in the upcoming twenty twenty-one budget because this council has voted no on that. Now, these are, the last one wasn't introduced, so it's obviously a moot point. But the Administrative Assistant Positions, last time we talked about this, were voted no by this council. Therefore, come October, when he submits a budget with the Administrative Assistance Positions in there, we cannot put that funding in the budget because this council voted no. Unless somebody wants to say that those ordinances are illegal, that's, that's fine, they can say that. And then we can, we can move on from there.
Uh, from a legal perspective, I disagree with Mr. Griffith's legal analysis of whatever he just said.
Of course.
And I, I think, Mr. Griffith, uh, the budget ordinance, as you know, will provide monies in the four positions. And if those positions are there and, and the monies are provided, that will become the budget that we'll move forward with.
Okay, I strongly will request that Mr. DeLuca or the Office of Law submit that opinion as to charter violation, so I have it.
Okay. Anyone else with questions?
Yeah, I, I do, Mr. Cherick, I speak in, please.
Yeah, I, I would ask, please, there's somebody, uh,
That's a child.
Yeah, it has, there's a, a young person, background I can hear. If you could just mute your microphones, make it easier for people to, uh, hear the speakers, I appreciate that. Mr. Haas, you have the floor.
Yeah, um, a few years ago, when we were doing the, the budget hearings, you know, we talked about the positions when they were, when they were put into the budget and council voted them down. And then somebody, I, I really think set a bad precedent, and they said, well, look, as long as the management finds money, they can still support that position, even though council voted it down. And I strongly vote, voted against, I strongly think that was the wrong approach. And again, going back to this, this is essentially what that, what that discussion point is all about. And I, I disagree with it. Again, it, it takes the, the elected power away from the representatives of the people in order to get a, a grasp on this budget. So I just hope we understand this, that by voting no against this does not mean that, that you wanna give the manager free rein with spending money that's not appropriate by council. So just keep that in mind as we go forward on this. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
No.
Mr. McGinnley?
No.
Three yes, eight no.
Thank you. Moving down to number nine. Motion to introduce the ordinance to amend the two thousand twenty position budget legislatively authorizing the elimination and creation of positions, Division Eighty, Public Defender, Department forty-one fifty-two, Public Defender's Office. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? On the question.
Mr. McGinnley, um, I just wanted to say that just because we're voting no is because it is, we don't, we agree with, I think most of us agree with the Office of Law. So I don't, I hope that in October, Mr. Griffith doesn't come back and say, well, this is what you voted no to. Because,
I will say that.
Yeah, but I think,
Ms. Sedman finished, please, and then, Mr. Griffith, you can have the floor.
That's your opinion, Walter. The majority of the council agrees with the lawyers.
Okay, Mr. Griffith, if you can reply.
No, that's, no, that's, that's, I, no, that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
Ms. Sageman?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three yes, eight no.
Thank you. Uh, moving down to number 10, I remember number 10 was a move from the work session to the voting session. On number 10, instead of a discussion, it'll be a resolution to reprimand County Councilman Waller Earl Griffith Jr. for violation of rules and procedures of operation for Loser County Council based on conduct related to the July 28, 2020 council meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved, McDermott.
Ms. McDermott, second.
Sheila.
Ms. Sageman? On the question?
Mr. McGinley, if I could just make a comment?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Sure, it's Kendra. Um, so there are just a few things that I want to address regarding the resolution, um, to reprimand Councilman Griffith. So comments have been made that it's childish, that my feelings have been hurt, and that there are more important matters at stake. First of all, Mr. Griffith is one of the first people to point out any violation to the charter bylaws or administrative code. When myself or another council member does it, then we're childish. He has stated many times, he feels it's his job to hold members of the county administration accountable, but up until this point, no one has held Mr. Griffith accountable for his own actions. The bylaws state we must conduct ourselves with, hold on, I'm just gonna read it, um, courtesy and respect for fellow office holders, the executive, members of the administration, county employees, and the public. The Facebook post is not the only example, even though it happens to be one of many. Some other examples include ripping up the letter and shoving it into Stephanie Salavantis, our district attorney's door, fighting almost every opinion made by the Office of Law, who are experts in their field, the treatment of the election board at our last meeting, the attempt to alter the interpretation of the charter to fit his own agenda, and misleading taxpayers to believe he is helping, when ultimately, he's hurting. In regards to my feelings being hurt, they're not. I simply believe that elected officials should be held to a higher standard than the rest of the public. And this doesn't involve feelings. This involves Mr. Griffith not having any tolerance for anyone whose opinion does not align with his own agenda. As I have stated before, there is a way to criticize a person's ideas without attacking and verbally abusing the person themselves. This conduct very blatantly goes against our bylaws, which every council member swore to uphold. There are more important matters at hand, yes, and the more quickly we can get past this unacceptable behavior, the more quickly we can get to those matters, and the more attention we can give to them. I'd also like to touch on what sparked the most recent Facebook issue. Mr. Griffith claims to be a watchdog for all taxpayers, but his recent plan to eliminate the penalty period begs the question, just who are you representing? Who are you being a watchdog for? Surely not the 85% of people that paid their taxes on time. You tried to embarrass us by the way we voted, but when that million dollar shortfall came around, who would pay for that, Walter? The people who pay their taxes on time. So again, who are you representing? The small portion of people, more likely corporations, that didn't pay yet and typically wouldn't have paid yet regardless of COVID. I chose to represent the majority that paid on time and saved them from the burden of having to make up for the shortfall that you would have caused.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with questions or comments?
Yes, this is me.
Ms. McDermott?
Okay. So, I'm not happy to do this. It doesn't make me feel remotely good. As a matter of fact, I'm disappointed that this has to take place. We all took an oath to uphold the charter administrative code, which is the reason for this reprimand. This doesn't come down to women, women having their feelings hurt. It comes down to common respect for other elected officials and people in general. Respect for, uh, fellow council members, even with differing opinions and decisions. It's okay to be with, uh, upset with or disappointed with the fellow council member who didn't vote your way. It's not okay to belittle or attack opposing views. And I'm not sure where some people are getting the idea that we're trying to silence Walter. We are not. Again, we're just asking for respect amongst all council members in meetings and out in public at all times. Uh, this lashing out did start, though, when Kendra and I didn't vote for the chair who Walter wanted, which was Linda Houck, and she is a Democrat just like Tim McGinley. Let me say that again. Walter was mad at us because we didn't vote for who he wanted.
Mr. McGinley, this is Linda Houck. I would prefer to be left out of this conversation.
All right.
Okay, let me continue, then. Isn't that what you accused Tim of doing? Mr. McGinley has never attempted to tell me how to vote, and although we do not always agree, he is respectful of my position. I understand that Walter has several county residents who agree with him. What he fails to acknowledge is that we all do. There are clearly many more residents in Loser County than the five who show up at every meeting and agree with everything he says. I would also say that there are clearly more sides to each issue than the side advocated by Mr. Griffith. And as Kendra just mentioned about the real estate tax penalty, trying to, you know, eliminate that, what he realized, he refused to acknowledge is that the move would cost the county over a million dollars, and we certainly cannot raise taxes at the end of the year. Who would have to pay for that? All county taxpayers. Everyone who paid on time. I took my oath of very seriously, and I will not be bullied by Mr. Griffith or anyone else into taking positions on issues that I believe are fiscally irresponsible and/or represent fringe interests that are not representative of all county residents. I ran on being fiscally responsible. So, Mr. Shiner, I agree with you. Let's move on. Lord knows, we have a lot of work to do. This is a waste of everyone's time. And like Vito said, so much time is wasted on things brought up in the meetings rather than what we could have prepared for before. And, Mr. Manta, the platform I ran on, which was on my handout card, was to work for sound fiscal management, deficit reduction, and balanced budget, to provide the best services for taxpayers at the lowest cost, and to focus on the future by seeking economic and industrial opportunities. I have two words for Mr. Griffith. Grow up, because your childish actions are making us all look foolish. Thank you.
Other people on the council?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
It's Sheila.
Go ahead.
I, uh, having served on council, and I'm sure some people are gonna disagree with me, but having served on council from my election on, I remember how much work we got done in those council meetings before Mr. Griffith joined us. It was a different atmosphere. There was discussion, there was disagreement, there was agreement, but it never dragged out like it has this year, this, this new term. I guess we'd say this year, too. So I don't understand that, because we did just fine. We did just fine. We did many good things. We didn't raise taxes, and I just don't understand why this has to be so argumentative. That everything is your way or the highway. And I just don't think it's also fair. I mean, all of us have ears. Obviously, Mr. Pedri is not somebody you like. That does not mean he doesn't do a good job. My God, from the position we were in, to have this kind of manager is a gift, a gift. Now, you may disagree with some of the little things, but you don't, you should not insult him, which has happened on a regular basis. And Mr. McGinley? The same thing. He's done a very fine job as chairman. I watched the meetings that Linda ran, too. She did a very fine job. But this is who we have now, and get with the program.
Other people?
Yes, Mr. McGinley, it's Linda Houck. Hello?
Go ahead, Ms. Houck, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I, I think that this is actually a personal dispute, uh, among people, and I don't believe that it belongs on a voting session. Um, I will also say that, um, I think that we need to be about doing the people's business and not, um, dealing in personalities here. Um, I understand that some people have been upset about some things that happen on social media and outside of the council room, but really, until today, I haven't heard anyone in a council meeting take another council member to task over their behavior and over their own voting and their opinions on how they vote. I heard a lot of people critical tonight of one council member during a council meeting. I have never heard Mr. Griffith or other people on council at all in my entire nine years during a council meeting berate another council member. I'm very disappointed to have this happen tonight. I don't believe that this should be, uh, part of our voting meeting at all, and I would like to move to table this.
We have a motion to table, uh, the reprimand as presented by Ms. Houck. Do we have a second for that?
Uh, well, Mr. McGinley, I think I need, I have to have a moment to rebut my critics.
No, the rules say, Mr. Griffith, unfortunately.
Oh, yeah, because we have a motion to table. I can't say anything?
That's correct.
How clever.
It's not my rule.
If there's a second.
We need a second? We got a second? If not?
I'll make comment after the vote. That's fine.
Okay. Do we have a second for Ms. Houck's motion to table? Hearing none, Mr. Griffith, you have the floor.
Okay. First of all, I, I am about good government. That's why I was involved in the study commission. That's why I worked on this charter. It's about good government. It's about the people of this county. That's who I represent, all of them. The, the, the issue with the money, the, the penalty, unless, unless some of the members of council haven't realized, we're in a crisis situation in this county. We have a lot of people who are still hurting, regardless of what the numbers show on who paid taxes and who didn't. And you know what? I don't know if it was businesses that have benefited from it, and I don't really care. What I do care about is the fact that the county is gonna get 10% more money from some poor taxpayer who might be down on his luck right now, that can't pay his taxes. Now, if you're talking about a million dollars, yeah, I understand there's consequences to that. I understand there's a million dollar shortfall. But that's, we also get $28 million that we're gonna start doling out to everybody. We also get $8 million in the county that we're gonna be able to use for emergency situations. We wasted over $50,000 in postage, just sending out mailers for the ballots. $50,000, okay? So there's a lot of waste to go around in this county government. There's a lot of waste that's happening in the administration, and it's about accountability and open government. That's what it's about. And if you didn't have this issue before Walter arrived, that's unfortunate, because we need to have these type of discussions, not this particular one, but issues like the ordinances that I bring in. It's about, we are the legislative branch of government, and that's what I was elected to do, be the representative of the people who elected me, and I'm gonna do that, whether anybody on council likes it or not. As far as outside council, listen, if I want to post something on Facebook, I have a First Amendment right to do that. That, that bylaws thing was written for Kathy Dobash because she was a renegade on council. That's all it was written for, no other reason. Her and Rick Morelli. So let's be clear about why that clause was actually put in the bylaws. It wasn't because we wanted to make sure people were respectful. I get it. There's a rule of decorum here at the meetings. I understand. We should have decorum at the meetings, but once I step outside that door, I represent the people of this county, and I also can say whatever I want to say. Those people will have the opportunity to remove me in four years. That'll be their refer, reprimand for me. But a member of council has absolutely no power to write a resolution of reprimanding against any member of council. I don't care who they are. And I'd like to know why, who, who drafted the resolution and allowed that to happen, because that's clearly enticing someone to violate the First Amendment rights, and I want to know who did that.
Anyone else on council?
Uh, Steve Herbert.
Yes, Mr. Urban.
So I want to just correct the record. Uh, one of my fellow colleagues had stated taxes were not raised. Actually, taxes were raised in 2019 by 3.25%, and taxes were also raised in 2017 by 4%. Um, in Pennsylvania, impeachment is actually the only constitutional mechanism to hold an elected official accountable. Uh, this would require action by the State House of Representatives, as they, as they have the sole power to impeach, and then such impeachment process would also require the State Senate to conduct a trial of the impeachment. Uh, censuring or reprimanding an elected official could occur, but there's actually no enforcement of such action. And so, you know, in my opinion, at the moment, what's going on is just merely sandbox publicity. Um, an official reprimand of a, of a council, council member while he or she is wearing his or, uh, her civilian hat while on a public social media platform creates an appearance of violating one's First Amendment right of freedom of speech. All elected officials and many of those who work in the public sector will most likely face public scrutiny regarding their individual job performance in their public service career. If one expects complete privacy or anonymity, um, outside of the public, uh, outside of their public service environment, might be in the wrong line of work. Uh, you have to, in essence, check your feelings at the door when in public office. Uh, we're all gonna take lumps, you know, and, and, and we're gonna need thick skin. Uh, no one's gonna like each other 100% of the time due to the public votes and the decisions we must make every two weeks, or, or whenever necessary. Uh, we all do have our own opinions. Um, you know, I mean, it, it's, it's amazing that we can try to reprimand one of our colleagues, but we can't reprimand the manager who, who is actually one of our employees. He is one of the two employees that we rate every year on an annual basis. But, but, you know, you know, the Office of Law sort of puts us in a conundrum situation where they're serving two masters, both a council, which is the legislative branch, and also, uh, the executive branch, which their paycheck comes from. So, you know, and that's one of the reasons why we put that, that, uh, ordinance ahead in earlier part of 2020 to try to figure out what we need to do in order to, when we have these little spats legally. You know, we have representation on council to be fair and, and non-biased, and, and, you know, just because they're attorneys don't mean that they're 100% correct all of the time. If they were so correct in everything they do, and if management was so correct in everything they do, they would have policies and procedures in place where they wouldn't put us in a liability's sake, and, and actually have, we have to pay out lawsuits at every turn, you know, and I would like to know how many lawsuits we have as a county. But, you know, I, I don't want to digress into this too much, but it is about accountability, job performance. I raised some issues in email. Obviously, I didn't get any responses. We have people that are still being able to write people in the address book that don't exist in the county any longer, and former employees, people that have been deceased for a while, you know, and, and so if you have-
Yeah, that's not actually true, though. That's not true, though.
Well, if they're there, you can email the account. Don't be tough, so don't, don't disrupt me, all right?
I just have trouble when people lie.
You know, first of all, I do IT work for a living, Mr. Pedri, so, and if, if somebody's address is in the address book, it can still be mailed, because they won't be getting a bounce-back message. All right? So you shouldn't be publicly displaying it there in, to begin with, because you can search their name, and if then email goes to that account, the email's pretty much gonna get delivered, but the person that sent it is not gonna get a response that that person is no longer there. And so, you know, two or three weeks can go by. They're, they're assuming that they're gonna get a response from somebody from the county, and they're not. So, you know, those are the small intricacies and the details that, that some of us are paying attention to. We're going into this, these systems, deep diving into what you guys are doing. And, and when you can't figure out something, or when you don't have a clear answer to us, that's what kind of disgusts us at times. Because your staff, like I told you privately before, you are only as good as the people that you surround yourself with, Mr. Pedri. You know, and, and leadership-
What does this have to do with, what does this have to do with Mr. Griffith?
Bottom line is, is- Let me finish here, okay? So, so the bottom line is, is that leadership starts at the top. It does start with us. We are the ones that control the purse strings in this county. You know, and then there are arguments that we're gonna, you know, legit, legitimate arguments that we're gonna have in public. And, and I expect, you know, your attorneys there to be fair to both council and yourself, you know, and when, when there are issues, we need to maybe start taking them upstairs. Okay? So, I mean, let, let's get the record straight here.
Anyone else at council?
Mr. Chair, I'm Harry Haas.
Go ahead, Ms. Haas.
Please, I want to encourage my, my colleagues to please vote this down or just withdraw this entirely. Gentlemen that called in earlier with the, with the public comment, this is over some, some Facebook memes, okay? That's what this is. This is-
No, it's not.
This does not violate-
Somebody can comment if they wish.
This does not violate council decorum. And I, I gotta tell you, colleagues, you know, I've been serving since day one, along with him and Linda. There were more toxic people on this council than Walter Griffith, let me tell you, and they were tough. They were tough, but at the same time, that's what we signed on for. We signed on to do the- the will to people and put ourselves out there, okay? If there's a problem with it, this is not the job for you. It just isn't. Walter, I don't agree with him all the time. He's got, he's got a brand of politics I don't necessarily follow along with, and he has cost taxpayers money over the years. He has, but this does not mean that this is the chance to come down on him, give him a formal reprimand, because he does represent the people. And what this is, this is a disagreement. You know, if, if we can't disagree here in the public forum, or even out there in, in public slash private life, out there on the internet, then people take it to the streets, and that's what we have here now in this country. We have a couple knuckleheads out there taking things to the streets, and they're not understanding that this is what a republican democracy is. It's disagreeing, even when it's uncomfortable, even when it's unflattering, even toxic. So, please, vote this down or just withdraw it entirely, because this is only going to make the problem worse. We've already spent about 20 minutes on this at this council meeting. Anybody listening has already shaken their head and rolled their eyes, I'm sure, at home, because how ridiculous this is. Please, let's move on.
Any other councilperson? Anyone else from council would like to speak?
This is Leanne.
Go ahead.
We did address this in the beginning of the year, and here we are again. So, it comes down to not being able to, again, respect it. We can't stop the public from saying anything, and our feelings are not getting heard over that. And again, we have people that agree with us. We have people that don't, but this is just part of, again, council respecting each other. Not trying to shut anyone up, not trying to stop the, the public from doing it. It's just a matter of common respect.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, was there any emails sent on this matter to you or to, uh, anyone regarding drafting this resolution?
Me?
Yes. Were you asked, were you asked for permission to draft this resolution?
Permission? I don't have to be.
We were, uh, the Office of Law, uh, there was a request made by council member, uh, to draft it, and one of the assistants drafted it.
And, and you thought-
And we will, and we will, whenever a council member asks us to draft something, we will. Uh, we have said that in the past, uh, that we will draft the, uh, ordinance or resolution, uh, and work with, uh, council members, uh, if there are issues, uh, and, uh, the council members, some council members, uh, have taken us up on that offer, and some, uh, choose not to.
So, if I ask you to draft something that's a violation of my First Amendment rights, you're going to do that?
Nobody's stopping you from talking.
Yes, you are.
All right.
No.
No, we aren't.
Oh, they're not? Okay.
Anyone else?
Call the question.
What's the repre- what's the reprimand then?
I have, I just have one comment, and then we'll go to the question if everybody's had their chance to speak.
Okay, thank you.
My, uh, comment will be, I, as council people, Luzerne County council members, I hope that we're held to a little higher standard than people out there in the public, uh, and obviously, because we're held to a higher standing, I would hope sincerely that people can respect one another, respect that one another's opinions, whether they agree or disagree, and move on, uh, once that, those opinions are stated and votes are taken. Uh, we certainly should be able to act like gentlemen and ladies, uh, at the council meeting to one another. I don't think there should be any reason to have any kind of animosity. Uh, we each have our own opinions. We each have our own philosophies, and certainly, you know, once we vote, uh, that's our opinion, our, that's our vote, and we move on, and I think that hopefully everybody can, um, subscribe to that. Vote as you wish, vote as you think is correct and proper, what you're comfortable with, and then move on and let everybody else have their opinion also. With that, we'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes, no. Yeah, it was pretty good, wasn't it?
Mr. Haas?
Absolutely not.
Ms. Haug?
No.
Ms. Nick Dermott?
Yes, and I just want to say I have no problem getting over this and respecting each other. I just want to move on and get the job done. Again, forgiving and forgetting, let's move on.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Seven?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Seven, yes, four, no.
Okay. Moving down to public comment on non-adjunct items. The, uh, microphone is now open for the public, please.
Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead. Who's, who's speaking?
Ron.
Who's speaking, please?
Ron Manta.
Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
With respect to, uh, the, uh, death of Mr. Mackey at the Luzerne County Correctional Facility.
Uh, Mr. Mackey is, uh, is the gentleman's name.
Yes, that's what I said. Mr. Mackey's death at the Luzerne County Facility, um, the county manager is the man who runs the executive branch of governor, and he is the ultimate responsible person for anything that happens in the county. He is the person in charge who would take the blame. In my estimation, after reviewing the video, there's the absolute necessity for accountability for people at the prison for what happened to Mr. Mackey, and the accountable persons is the manager, because he is the person who does the hiring, all the, of all the corrections officers, the wardens and deputy wardens, and because of this, he's responsible for their qualifications and actions. So, therefore, the buck has to stop at his desk, and if anyone should be accountable, it be him for any injustice that happened to Mr. Mackey. And the ability to settle a lawsuit to the tune of $3 million obviously appears that the county has admitted they did something wrong, otherwise, why pay out the $3 million? I'm only asking for accountability, and there was a motion by County Councilman Walter Griffith and County Councilman Steven Urban for accountability, and members of council did not pass that, so I'm requesting for that motion be rebut visited, so the manager can be held accountable for his actions at the prison. Now, onto a different subject, this pertains to the CARES Act, the first administration or, um, allocation of it. These people that I'm going to mention, I feel it would be appropriate to send a thank you letter to these individuals because of the bipartisan, uh, participation in coming to a resolution for the American citizens. Nancy Pelosi, Speaker of the House, Kevin McCarthy, House Majority Leader, Charles Schumer, United States Senate Majority Leader, Mitchell McConnell, Senator Majority Leader, President Trump, and Vice President Pence. All the people mentioned, I believe, receive a letter thanking them for working in a bipartisan manner, which resulted in the first CARES Act, which has been extremely helpful to the, a lot of individuals with small businesses. This was, this way, it shows we recognize their effort together to keep American taxpayers from going bankrupt. Luzerne County should recognize the importance of bipartisan efforts to have received 22 million to distribute for hurting individuals and small businesses alike. I hope that this can be considered by Luzerne County Council. Thank you, Mr.
McGinley. Thank you. Members of the public?
Mr. Mantha.
Mr. Mantha, go ahead first. Mr. Mantha's, and I think Mr. Raybo was behind you, but go ahead, Mr. Mantha.
Yes, I, I, I'd just like to clarify that I'm not trying to point a finger at, at an individual, okay? What I'm saying in, in my statements, uh, and I heard my name mentioned, and it should be the county council has funds for the next upcoming year. All they have to do is allocate them in the right way, and they could make it through the next year. And the funds that are coming down from the federal government and the state government for the county, the people that paid their taxes, which I've already done because it comes out of my mortgage, and the people that are getting hurt are the people that can't afford to pay their taxes on time because they have other issues. That was my point, just like we fought for the rain tax, all right, to help the people that are being hurt in the valley for an issue, just like to eliminate that penalty would not have hurt the county in any way, because of the fact that they would have the funds. Uh, maybe they wouldn't have the fund because they lost 3 million, they lost 9,000, they lost 19,000. There's three big chunks of money they lost this past year because of certain things, and, well, wait a minute, these are all things that they're paying out to the public, so why can't they give the public a break on 10% of, of the fee? And, and like I said, I'm not aiming at anybody, all right, but I do think that county council should not reprimand Walter, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Mantha.
And he has, he has a lot of good things that people are not looking at because of the fact that they want to shut him down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Raybo, I think you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, in the many years that I've attended council meetings, uh, since home role, uh, took effect, this has to be the status, uh, commentary and reflection of the county council, uh, that I've ever witnessed. Um, for anyone to say that they could, uh, an elected council person could reprimand another elected council person for what they did outside of a meeting is nothing short of astonishing. It's, it's really breathtaking to say that, well, you know, I, I don't like what that person did and said, so I'm just going to use council and the majority that are my friends to reprimand another council member as, you know, it's just, it's just ridiculous. Um, also, I would like to add to what, uh, Councilmember Urban said about what was cited, uh, as far as, I would like to specifically point to Article 6, Section 7 to the Office of Law, that the removal of civil officers or punishment of civil officers, elected officials, can only be done by the state legislature. Can't be done by fellow elected council members. So, therefore, this reprimand is a violation of the state constitution, which you all took oaths to uphold and defend. So, I would like to, uh, you know, ask, uh, Councilman Griffith to file a complaint with the state and against the Office of Law and all the council members who voted for this action, because this is flying in the face of the state constitution in, in terms of this resol- this resolution of reprimand. So, um, also-
You gotta get some water, wait.
So, also, I would like to-
Somebody please turn off the microphone so we can hear Mr. Raybo. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. McGinley, can I speak?
Yeah, there was some background noise there, Mr. Raybo, that was interfering.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So, anyway, going to what you said, Mr. Chairman, as far as, we can all disagree respectfully during the meeting. I, I've disagreed with you, with other members of council throughout the years, and I've done so, uh, I've stated my disagreement, and I've done so in a professional and respectful manner and cordial manner. I do not, uh, hold any malice or hostility towards anyone who disagrees with me, but I think that everything that should be adhered to as far as the law and also with decorum should be also followed and respected. So, that being said, I hope we can all move forward from this and be better people, uh, moving forward, because we still have a pandemic out there, and I would like to, uh, ask, uh, the manager to look at, um, since the, uh, increase of the positive, uh, infected COVID rates are going up, uh, because of, uh, younger people having ga- large gatherings, uh, I sent, um, something to the manager, and, uh, I think I sent it to members of council. If not, I will send it after the meeting. Uh, the Los Angeles City Mayor has proposed to shut off power and water utilities in the event of, uh, COVID parties being held for large gatherings of people. Now, I don't know if the Office of Law can look into that, but I think that would be, that would deter any kind of increase of COVID cases moving forward in the county, going into the fall and winter. So, if that could be, uh, looked at, um, I will send the information and, uh, hopefully that, uh, the Office of Law and, uh, the manager can look at that and maybe consult with the municipalities that, uh, are affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public, please?
Beth Hartman?
Go ahead, Ms. Hartman.
Hi, my first question, and I'm going to walk away from my computer again, is, uh, it is my understanding that council received a bunch of emails today. When will they be read during the meeting? Tonight?
Excuse me, I can't hear you. I missed something there.
How about, how about now? So, yep, sure. So, it's my understanding that the city, that the county council has received a bunch of emails that will be read during tonight's meeting. Could you tell me when those emails are going to be read?
Well, we're not going to read all the emails. I am going to identify the emails by the senders. They will be part of our record, and they will be found on our webpage with all the information that was provided from the email senders.
Okay, because it does say on the website that if we submit an email, they will be read at the meeting.
Well, uh, in light of everything, that's the, uh, information I've received. I've requested, uh, the sister to re- review that and provide that to me prior to the meeting.
So.
And we do have, in fact, we do have your email, Ms. Hartman.
Yep. If somebody can find that, okay, so, then this is my open portion. So, from the pledge of, from the pledge of allegiance, we say liberty and justice for all. That includes poor white people, black people, Hispanic, and other minorities that I feel in this county are not being protected. I'm talking right now about the release of, uh, video of the murder at the jail. I am demanding, as well as other citizens of Luzerne County, that we revisit Walter Griffith and Steve Urban's motion weeks ago, when they saw there was a need for accountability. The money stops at the top, and that's the manager's desk. We would like to remove him from service. We, the citizens, are paying him $140,000 a year. I would also ask for an external investigation into the DA's actions and the handling of the situation, and the guards charged, if found, under that investigation. Somebody mentioned on this call-
Are we, uh, flying?
Excuse me.
Are we flying?
The service went down.
Mr. Let, Ms. Hartman, please.
Holy smokes.
She has the, uh, floor. Ms. Hartman, please.
Okay. When, someone on this call said get with the program for Walter. I think he's with the program. Other people need to listen to what's going on. I'm a small business owner. I've had no income in months. My mother is 87 years old, and I've taken her to council meeting. She paid her taxes on time, but she will be eating a little less during this time. She can't get out to get the senior meals, to get lunches, due to her recent pacemaker replacement. That is all of my comments. Have a great night, and thank you for listening.
Okay, Ms. Hartman, if, uh, for your mom's, um, to help her out, have you contacted the Agency on Aging? They do have programs. They deliver meals, et cetera.
I'll take, I'll take care of my mother, but her taxes are paid because-
Okay.
-council could not, I, I totally, I totally understand. I will take care of my mother and my family like I always do, but how many other senior citizens out there are going to be eating less because they were for, mu- doing the early tax break saves my mother between 800 and $1,000.
Okay.
So, she does it to save that money. So, that's gone.
I understand.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Other members of the public, please.
Hi, Jason Carr, Salersburg, Pennsylvania. Mr. Chairman, I would like, thank you so much. Uh, I would like to direct my comments to Ms. Radell and Ms. McDermott.
No, you can't personally direct the comments to the chair, which, I know we've talked-
Mr. Chairman, I'll dir- I'll direct them to you and you convey them clearly.
Okay.
I'm sure they can hear me. I greatly appreciate it. Uh, I haven't spoken to Mr. Griffith about his amendment that he proposed a couple of weeks ago, but, uh, as I thought it through, I think the intention was to help those who could not help themselves, whether they were a large business or whether they were a small business that were told to close, or whether they were a landlord who government entities have told tenants not to pay their landlords, or the person that was told, who was laid off from work. I think that was the intention of the ordinance, to give the taxpayers of this county a break, whether it be five percent, twenty percent. Those are the people most likely that were not able to help themselves. And Walter heard their voices and he proposed an amendment to give the taxpayers of this county a break. And seven, I believe it was seven of you voted, were not going to. Just as Mr. Matta said, we're gonna put a knee to your neck and we're gonna take your house because this is what it's all about. And I thank Mr. Urban, I thank Ms. Hauck, I thank Mr. Haas and Mr. Griffith for voting and standing for the people. And in three years, the people will speak and remove those from office, those two, as well as Ms. Sedman and Mr. Perry and Mr. Vogt who voted against it.
No personal comments, please, thank you.
No, Mr., no, you're wrong, you're wrong. I can mention them. You're violating my rights now, Mr. McGinley. I can mention them. Councilmen, we are going to vote out Councilman Vogt, Councilman Perry, and Councilman, Councilwoman Sedman next November. I can say that.
Bring him a speech.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of, of the public?
Brian Shiner.
Go ahead, Mr. Shiner.
Well, every once in a while, I get a surprise, you know, all the years I've been attending, uh, these council meetings since we changed over to home rule, but tonight literally takes the cake. To reprimand a fellow council member on something they do in their private time. You say that you took an oath to uphold the charter and the codes of the county, including the administrative code, yet the same seven of you that voted to admonish Mr. Griffith voted to violate the charter and the administrative code on the opinion of attorneys. Makes no sense. And to tie up and take this much time to reprimand someone when it's not even worth the paper it's gonna be printed on. This council just gets so amazing to me at times as to what you do. You're there supposedly to do the best interest of the people and make sure this government works right, not, not to, uh, carry on with personal vendettas. On another note, I see that Mr. Rakovich is online, and as I saw that two weeks ago, I had to say something. So again, tonight I will say something, Mr. Rakovich. Thank you. I raised the issue two weeks ago that the prisoners were cut off unless they had funding to their families and friends and their loved ones. Mr. Rakovich and his staff worked and put the free phone calls back in. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Other members of the public?
Uh, John Soski.
Go ahead, Mr. Soski.
Uh, I just wanna know, uh, what kind of oversight is there on the prison and is there any interest in having any civilian oversight, you know, review boards or any, what kind of review boards could you have for the prison? And, uh, just on the, uh, about the, uh, uh, with the raising of tax, uh, or, uh, the late fees, the fifteen percent of people that can't pay those late fees, you know, those are people that are probably hurt by this pandemic right now, so, you know, those are, you know, maybe only fifteen percent people needed that help, but I'm sure a lot of people that can't afford to pay their taxes on time really needed that help. So I really think, I don't know, I'm just surprised that all the Democrats that we have on council really didn't back that, you know, I just think it's weird that the Democrats at this time would not be trying to help people in need who are hurt by this, hurt at this time during the pandemic. But I just, uh, I'd like to hear about what kind of oversight you have over at the prison and what kind of oversight you're looking to add into having at the prison at, uh, at Water Street. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Soski, I think that you may be aware, or you probably are, that the, the charter itself abolished the prison board that was formerly under the commissioner of former government. The prison is part of the executive branch, so the supervision of the supervisors in the executive branch and the man, and the county manager, and they provide whatever oversight and, uh, they're in charge of the prison and the daily operation there.
Well, is the county manager allowed to bring in any, you know, have any kind of volunteer, volunteer civilian oversight or any kind of oversight committees?
I can't-
Or council members?
Uh, I can't tell you if the, uh, county manager is allowed to do that, but, uh, if, uh, Mr. Pedri, I, he's on the pho- he's on the line, so if he's able to respond, I'm not sure.
Uh, yeah, we, I mean, we bringing outside individuals all the time to review policies, uh, for all the county, uh, functions at one point or another. I mean, I mean, not just the prison, but for other departments as well. Uh, we bringing outside entities at points.
Okay. Any other members of the public, please?
Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Sure.
Um, on the-
Well, right now, Walter, is there anybody else in the public and then certainly you can have an opportunity?
Okay.
Uh, any members of the public who haven't had a chance? Barry Nun, Walter, you got the floor.
Okay. Um, on the webpage for the county, as Ms. Hartman alluded to-
Yes.
-said that those emails will be read into the record. I am asking for a motion of counsel to have them read into the record. These people took good time out of their day to send emails to this council with the understanding that they were gonna be read into the record as described on our webpage, which clearly says comments submitted by email will be read into the record at the live meeting. Note, comments typed into the chat feature of YouTube are not part of the meeting and will not be seen by council, will not be made part of the record. These emails need to be part of the record. These people were told it was gonna be that way, they took the time to send emails to council. For us to arbitrarily just say, oh, we got too many, so we're not gonna read them, I don't think is fair to those folks that took the time to read them.
That's not what I said, Mr. Griffith, but-
Okay.
Uh, I said that I had asked the solicitor's office prior to the meeting what our responsibility was in regards to these emails.
Who is, Mr. McGinley, why is the solicitor's office able to circumvent anything that we wanna do? I don't understand.
They're not circumventing, I asked for, uh, information. They're not circumventing, I asked for it.
Well-
Make sure that we, we do things properly, Mr. Griffith, I'm not-
But, but we told-
You're not circumventing, that if you want-
But we told everybody-
Say something to me, that's fine, but it's not with the solicitor's office, that's, you know, I asked for the information, I'm sorry.
But we told, but we told the people that their comments would be read. So we lied to the people of this county.
We didn't lie-
That is not acceptable.
We're not lying to anybody, Mr. Griffith.
Well, what's it say on the website?
Public record.
What does it say on this website?
Mr. Griffith, this is all public record, we don't lie to people.
What did it say on the website?
I not lie to people, are you accusing me of lying?
If you're not allowing those comments-
Are you accusing me of lying?
Mr. McGinley, Mr. McGinley, we, uh, did a review of what the legal requirements, uh, are, uh, to reading these, uh, uh, emails, uh, into the record, uh, that was our analysis. Um, uh, I, uh, did not look at the website, um, uh, it would not be a violation, uh, of the, uh, of any law to read them into the record, um, so at this juncture, uh, given that there, uh, is a representation made, uh, on the website that we will read them into the record, uh, I, I will, uh, gladly read them into the record or, uh, someone from council can read them into the record.
Well, I think I have a copy of each and every one of the, uh, emails that were received.
Well, we all do.
I, yes, I, I, I believe each councilperson has a copy at least, uh-
I, and I certainly understand the volume of emails that you will have to read. My concern is that we made the statement on our website to tell the people that that would happen. For us not to do that, I think is disingenuous to everybody who took the time to send a letter to this council with the understanding that they would be read. I understand we could read them into a record and make them part of the record at some other point, but that's not what the people were understanding when they sent those letters in, and that's why they sent them in.
Um, that was part of your statement, Mr. Griffith, the other part was-
If they're read on, if, I'm sorry, if they're read during the council meeting, then they're part of the record. Uh, there's no legal requirement to do it, but there is a representation made on, on the website.
I have no problem providing the, uh, emails, that's, that's fine. I have no problem with that. That's what the, uh, uh, information says, we'll do it. I mean, but I don't like to be called liar, I think, Mr. Griffith-
No, I did not say, I said, we are lying. I said, we are lying.
You said, we lie.
I said, we lie to the people, yes.
Yeah, and that's, I'm part of that.
Okay, well, what, what are we, what are we doing, Mr. McGinley, if that's not what we're doing?
Well, I am not a liar, Mr. Griffith.
What are we doing, then?
What are we doing? We're gonna do what we supposed to, I guess.
Okay. Mr. Griffith, Councilman Griffith, we were asked, uh, what the legal requirement, uh, was, uh, regarding reading these comments into the record, and we could not find a legal requirement to do that. What I'm saying right now is I did not look at the website, and if the website has made a representation that we will read them into the record, my recommendation, uh, as Chief County Solicitor, is to read them, uh, read them at the counseling. And, and I, uh, uh, Mr. McGinley was operating under, uh, an opinion that I offered, uh, based on, uh, an analysis of the law, uh, and I did not read the website. But at this juncture, uh, I'm recommending that the statements be read.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Bearing that in mind, uh, I have a email here from Mr. Schaefer, Mark Schaefer. I attended the protest and the vigilance Wednesday on the weekend, Shaheen Mackey, Mackey, I think that's misspelled, that's fine, who killed it by the Luzerne County Correction Facility prison guards. I was disappointed not to see a member of council there or any other showing support. I watched the video and was disgusted. How has no one been fired, one alone prosecuted? Anyone who has ever been to CPR training once in their life could have done a better job trying to resuscitate-
Go, Walter.
I would ask, would, please, people, mute your microphone, please. Uh, giving CPR to someone while still in a chair like that doesn't work. Before he was even passed out, guards were completely disorganized in trying to restrain him. Have they ever been trained or how to do a hold? Uh, my five-foot-two girlfriend has to restrain patients who are violent and on drugs all the time at the hospital and manages to do that without killing them. This many prison guards couldn't, this is disgusting. The DA may have refused to press the charges that they, that are deserved, just because Ms. Sullivan refuses to do a job doesn't mean council can still act and ensure the county does in its own investigation, drastically changes guard operation procedures and training to ensure this never happens again. These men should be fired, if not in jail, and, and if county council doesn't act, it will only happen again. The next person who dies in jail will be, uh, all on you. The next email that I have is from Eugenia Gaston. Thank you, counsel, my name is Shaheen Mackey. He has a name, Shaheen Mackey. We are citizens of Luzerne County, need to ask Luzerne County to pass a motion to remove the county manager and the warden in support of Walter Griffith and Steve Urban. Motion weeks ago when they saw there was a need for accountability, the money stops at the manager's desk and why we, the citizens of the county, pay him a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Now, with that said, watch this video. If you think nothing was wrong here, then you need to watch it again and again until you figure it out. When I saw the story in his pictures months ago, I was waiting for the whole story to come out, which was never going to unless the video was leaked. Watch right before he comes unresponsive, how his neck is held to the left of the guard's butt. Watch again and again if you must. The DA's office tries to sign people with bail restrictions and threats of violation of said bail to silence your constituents, and I don't believe anything I read in the paper. Charges are trumped up so high that in the end, the person has to plead, pleas for a lower charge. Reporters used to be investigative journalists, now they are fed stories. The story they, they'll want the public to hear the story, the DA's office wants to tell. He has a name, Shaheen Mackey. The next one is from Samantha Blankenship. Dear county council members, today I'm writing to you because we, the people, have witnessed an atrocity, a horror right here in our own backyard, and the people that are presently in a position to make justice swift have decided not to take action. They turn a blind eye to the outreach hands for help and a deaf ear for our cries. Our Warren Wilkes Barre council members don't even think we have a problem here. How is it possible after seeing the twenty-three-minute video of pain and pure suffering? That was cruel and unusual punishment, he needed medical attention, instead was bound and beaten. Since the video has gone viral, other people who have been in the care of the Luzerne County Correctional Facility are speaking up about their own horrendous treatment or saying that it's just another day at ninety-nine Water Street. Well, that's unacceptable. The complete disregard for human life and decency is absolutely appalling. There is not a single ounce of integrity, honor, or professionalism shown in the twenty-three-minute video from either the nurses or the correction officers. We, the people, demand change. We, we change that comes with receipts. We demand the following actions. One, a motion for David Pedri to be removed, this county manager. Two, an independent investigation into the murder of Shaheen Mackey. Three, all correction officers and nurses that were in the room with him are directly responsible, to be held accountable. They should be fired and nurses should lose their licenses. Four, we're asking for reform, thus any officer or employee involved in the incidents that result in injury or death of a citizen or it may be suspended until a thorough investigation is done and completed. If an officer is found to be guilty of misconduct, there must be a system that holds them accountable. We can no longer afford to react to situations, we must be proactive. So far, the people that are put in place to represent our voices and protect us as citizens of this area have failed us. We have denied justice to this man's family, he has children who will never know him. This isn't about the side of politics you're on, it's about lives of everyone here. Civil servants at, of any level should be held to a higher level of accountability than they currently are. Thank you. Uh, this letter is from Jasmin Taboran Giddings. I would like to bring your attention to death of Shaheen Mackey. This is, was a black male who was at the Luzerne County Prison and died tragically in the presence of a couple nurses and guards. The video that saw was horrific video and no person deserves that type of treatment. Regardless of it, someone has done wrong or not, we should treat everyone as life worth living. And you imagine losing a loved one when they are in the presence of people who are in positions of power, and their first response- positions of power, and their first response is to protect people. I pray for the family who is going through this, and they are the ones who are left with the memory of the video that shows negligence, while the public is left to know that protection and duty are just words that sound nice rather than words that we live by. CPR in a chair? Isn't that something that is taught not to do? Police are not able to speak up when they see something wrong and decide to follow orders. Nurses who have been trained but just following orders, tasing an individual who is restrained already. Time that it takes where you think someone took a drug, and instead of calling for help, you stand around harassing him, asking him what he took. But even if that was the cause, a doctor would be better confirming these things. You could take immediate action to save a life. Do black lives really matter? All of these questions run through my mind, and I think they should be the ones that we look at. Respectfully, I ask for you to really look at this video. If we let this go, Luzerne County as well as all of America will continue to divide in seeing that there is faster response and social justice for one group rather than other groups. I ask for reform and justice specifically in making sure that those responsible are held accountable for their actions and reform of policies that make it impossible to see this happen again. Thank you for reading. I have another email here from James Jaskola. Good afternoon. My name is James Jaskola. I'm writing from Kingston, Pennsylvania. Like all of us who watched the horrible video, I was disgusted by Shaheen Mackey's death and cruel and horrific display of violence akin to torture. I found myself just as disgusted and upset at the mishandling of justice in this case. Mackey's family received a settlement. They are found deserving of a settlement. Why has District Attorney Salvanas insist that there is no wrongdoing done despite graphic evidence to the contrary? Why have none of the people responsible been fired or charged? These are demands of the family per their attorney. Remove Mr. Pedri from his post as county manager. Launch an independent outside investigation. Fire those involved in inciting incident as well as the investigation. Implement policies that suspend any personnel involved in a death at the correctional facility. All eyes are on you folks to do the right thing. We have an opportunity to be on the right side of history and provide restorative justice to the community and to the Mackey family. Make justice a urgent priority. Thank you. Another email from Jimmy D. I want to see justice for Shaheen Mackey. I want to see reform in the Justice Department, removal of positions. I want to see licenses removed from guards and nurses. I want those directly responsible for the death of Shaheen Mackey to do the time that any other murderer would get. I want justice. I want change. Reform, reform, reform. The CROs aren't properly trained and trained properly. I want them to be trained properly. When we break the law of citizens, we are held responsible and punished. As a child, we are taught that. I want the city of Wooksboro to stand up for what is right, do the right thing. Another email, Sue Ann Berstein, I believe, from Luzerne. Please endorse an independent investigation of the death of Shaheen Mackey, who died at the hands of the prison officials in Luzerne County Correctional Facility two years ago. We need an investigation to unearth the policies that led to this unlawful death. Thank you. Heather Shaughnessy. Thank you, council. He has a name, Shaheen Mackey. We, the citizens of Luzerne County, need to ask Luzerne County Council to pass a motion to remove the county manager and the warden in support of Waller Griffith and Stephen Urban. Motion two weeks ago when we saw there was a need for accountability. The money stops at the manager's desk. That's why we ask the citizens of the county pay him $140,000 a year. Now with that said, watch this video. If you think nothing is wrong, you need to watch it again and again until you figure it out. When I saw this story in his pictures months ago, I was waiting for the whole story to come out, which was never going to unless the video was leaked. Watch right before it becomes unresponsive and how his neck is held to the left of the guard's butt. Watch again and again if you must. The DA's office tries to silence people with bail restrictions and threats of violation of said bail to silence your constituents, and I don't believe anything I read in the paper. Charges are trumped up so high that in the end, the person has to plead for a lower charge. Reporters used to be investigative journalists, now they are fed stories. The story they want the public to hear, the story the DA's office wants to tell. He has a name, Shaheen Mackey. We, the citizens of Luzerne County, need to ask Luzerne Council to pass a motion to remove the county manager and the warden in support of Waller Griffith and Steve Urban. Motion weeks ago when they saw there was a need for accountability. The money stops at the manager's desk. That's why we, the citizens, of the county, pay him $140,000 a year. He has a name, Shaheen Mackey. Thank you. This was an attachment to an email that was submitted by Beth Gilbert McBride. I'm writing to you tonight as a taxpayer, mother, and elected official. Would please consider speaking up and requesting that an independent outside agency investigate the death of Shaheen Mackey and to put any correction officers involved with Mr. Mackey's death on administrative leave until investigation is completed. Hope that all of you have taken time to watch the horrific video of Mr. Mackey's death. While we have read about this death, it is certainly different to watch the treatment of this man on video. It is uncomfortable, but necessary for all of us to watch. No one deserves to suffer. Mr. Mackey clearly did. I am not a medical professional. I am not a correctional officer. I do try my best to differ between what is right and what is wrong. Morally, I do not see anything right in the video of Mr. Mackey's death. As elected officials, all of us have the moral responsibility to do what's right. I know some members of county council personally. I know that you have a heart, and I know that you feel deep in your gut that what the video showed is modern-day lynching of a black man. You know the situation could be de-escalated and should have been handled differently. I beg you to not use the black, brown communities in our county for votes when it's politically convenient for you to do so around election time, but stand up for those communities when the president calls for us to do so. Do not say black lives matter, but then do nothing to help black lives, black lives in the community. History has eyes on you, and since county council is not demographically representative for our county, people are counting on you to call out injustices when you see it. None of us will ever know the anguish that a mother to black or brown children goes through on a daily basis. We will never know the feeling of worry deep in the gut when our child is pulled over by a police officer. We will never know what it feels like to try to explain to our child how to show their hands to the police so they don't get shot. This is an enormous privilege, and it's up to all of us to do whatever we can to ensure that this doesn't happen in our community. If we can help ensure that at least one life in the city is safe and one more mother doesn't have to cry out in anguish and feel the need to burn down our cities, then we are not doing that. Please do your job and demand an outside investigation and aforementioned request. Your community is depending on you. Another email from Sharie Clark. I'm writing to you today in response to the viewing of the Shaheen Mackey video. The conduct of those representing the Department of Corrections depicted in the video had me questioning humanity and professionalism of the entire system. The offense committed by the officers and medical staff is an atrocity, and not only are we looking for them to be held accountable, but those who didn't see fit to do so. I, on behalf of the Freedom Fighters Organization of Wooksboro, do submit a list of five actions we are expecting this council to move on swiftly. They are listed. One, we are asking council to make a motion to have David Pedri removed as county manager. Two, we're asking for an outside investigation into the handling of the murder of Shaheen Mackey. Three, we're asking for employment investigation for those involved in the murder of Shaheen Mackey. Four, we are asking for a policy to be implemented that would ensure any officer or employee involved in the incident that results in an injury or death is suspended until investigation can take place and completed. Five, we're asking that the current existing policies and procedures implemented for the Department of Corrections be enforced with accountability and consequences if violated. Thus far, there has been a miscarriage of justice that has caused unrest within the community this council represents. We trust that you will represent our interests, as this is your opportunity to assure us that you're a true representative of the people you vowed to serve. Ms. Hartman. Thank you, council. Waller was elected by the citizens of the county... Okay. Waller was elected by the citizens of the county to stop the corruption, to get his eyes and ears back on what was to happen in the county. Council trying to silence him is a violation of the First Amendment, a violation to everyone in this county. Everyone should, in this day and age, have a social media account, keep us informed of what's going on, and be able to express your thoughts, just as the President of the United States does. This is a childish attempt by Matt Boe to take the citizen's eye off the ball. Let's get to work, guys, and transparency and end the good old boys' club and start working towards equality for all, not taxing seniors out of their homes, cleaning up all the evildoers in our county agencies. Quote from the Bible, especially in 5:7, 5:11, excuse me, "Take no pardon in untruthful works of darkness," instead of exposing. I'm sorry, Waller Griffith. I am sure that Matt Boe took your story, took my post to try to use against you. Sorry, I am a woman. I can talk about why I voted for women in the county and how they are not doing what they said to get elected. I vote cross-party lines. I vote for the person in the platform. Then I vote on performance. I tagged Matt Boe, who I tagged himself because I voted for him, and he is too disappointing so far. I was slinging my voting. I brought up gender. Bigger question is, who fed? Leaked in internal emails to the press. This should be investigated as they need to be reprimanded. This one, I'm not quite sure of who submitted. It's P. Looks like Lil Butch. All correction officers, nurses, and coroner involved remain. Death of Shaheen Mackey must be fired immediately. Citizens of Luzerne County and stand with the family, Shaheen Mackey. An independent investigation and outside agency needs to be initiated immediately. There must be consequences for all of those involved in Shaheen Mackey's death. Corruption through settling lawsuits will no longer be tolerated by Luzerne County citizens. I believe those are the ones that were submitted, the email.
Mr. McGinley, I'd like to say a couple things.
Okay. I think there's no other anyone else in the public at this point. Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
All right. I just wanted to thank you for actually being consistent.
Oh, wait, I was... I'm sorry. My mic's muted.
You already had your chance on public comment. Thank you. Mr. Urban has...
All right. I just wanted to say thanks, you know, for being consistent and following the detail of the website, you know, specifically. You know, I mean, by not doing it, it would have been sort of like going out to the store and it's sort of much like false advertising. False advertisement, I'm sorry. You know, advertising, we're gonna do something and not do it. So I thank you for reading those emails. I want to actually just put a motion out there for a lack of confidence in Mr. Pedri's leadership within the county, and I'm gonna make five brief points on this. And number one, we've had multiple prison deaths resulting in lawsuits over the last few years under Mr. Pedri's watch. Mr. Pedri, his executive staff is many times ill-prepared to come to council meetings to provide accurate and transparent information to council. They know that we have 11 different personalities, but they should be professional enough to anticipate the types of questions that we're going to ask, knowing that some of us are very detailed-oriented. Number three, he gets agitated, I know, sometimes when I speak and interrupts. You know, and that's part of being in public service. Number four, his IT department failed to protect the county data last year by having adequate backups, which resulted in basically the loss of the assessment database for many months, shutting down pretty much real estate for months in this county. Another issue, injecting himself in the voting process in our representative democracy by sending out a letter and ballot applications, adding to the chaos, you know, with this past election and the voting issues that we've had, which I still have yet to get answers for, and, you know, obviously, time is of the essence when it comes to voting issues. I would love to seize the machine that was used in Cole Street because it was not open till 2 o'clock in the afternoon. I would love to look at the programming to see if it was individually programmed for all the many wards that was up there at Cole Street. So, you know, based on those few points, I'd like to make a motion to have a vote of no confidence in Mr. Pedri's leadership.
Mr. Urban has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. That's Walter.
Mr. Griffith makes a second. On the question?
I just want to note that the matter of a vote of no confidence has been before counsel before, and the position of the Office of Law at that time is that such a motion would be a violation of the Charter.
And you're also violating my legislative right to bring a motion to the table.
And...
And a duly seconded.
And this, this type of motion...
This is gonna reprimand. This is a lack of confidence.
And that has been debated. There have been opinions from the Office of Law. I believe, I believe that Councilman Bruminsky historically brought such a motion.
Mr. Bruminsky is no longer on council. This is a different...
Okay. Wait a minute. Let Ms. Prokamo finish, then Mr. Urban, and you'll have an opportunity to come back, please.
And the Charter is clear. The Charter is absolutely clear as to council's position and ability to act versus the county manager. And as to anybody making a reference of bringing it upstairs, I can tell you that me, myself, and my staff are very well experienced about bringing matters to the third floor. That does not intimidate us. That does not scare us. But I caution council...
I do have that right to make a motion.
And that, and I caution council that the purpose of the Charter was not to bring litigation to the Luzerne County Court of Common Pleas. And council acts as a body. Individual council members who threaten litigation cannot represent council as a body. Council has to make that decision.
Okay. And I do have that right to actually make a motion, and it was duly seconded.
And we have the motion...
Can I be heard, Mr. McGinley?
We have the motion. Excuse me. We have a motion on the floor. Mr. Urban, you done?
You know, it's a matter of opinion when it comes to the attorneys in the county. Like I said before, the attorneys aren't always 100% correct.
We are in this matter. Absolutely.
Well, like I said, you can go around the table, Ramilda, you know, Attorney Prokamo. I mean, it can go around the table. I've stayed in my piece here.
I'm not.
And if I want to throw something else in there, I think the county mental health care system is also in chaos.
Well, let's focus on what we're talking about.
But I mean, there's so many issues that I could bring up for that lack of confidence.
Okay.
Okay? Many. And if I could...
Can I be heard, Mr. McGinley, when you're done?
Yeah, as soon as we... Mr. Urban, you finished?
I mean, you know, I know for a fact that Mr. Pedri has also failed to respond to certain individuals that have come to me for issues within the county. They're still trying to get some assistance and help. He and his staff are not, to me, are giving subpar service to the people, which are your customers on a daily basis. These are the members of the public that pay their taxes, that pay your salaries. And I know you guys don't like to get called out on the carpet at times, okay? But you represent the people, just like we do. But you represent the people, just like we do. You get paid by us, just like we are getting paid by the people. And we have a job to do to hold you accountable, and every one of you on staff accountable. And, and legislators don't have to make a reason, you know, I mean, we can make a motion, and it could be duly seconded, and then it's up to you to challenge it in court if, if necessary, because that's the way the State House works, and the State Senate, the US Congress, and the US Senate. And it's, it's no different at a county level within a Commonwealth. This is a free country, there's three branches of government, and we're all here to check each other. And I'm calling it out, and I'm checking him. So I'd like to make a motion of.
You did make a motion, you have a second. That's on the floor.
So.
On the floor.
Call for the vote.
May I be heard, sir?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Pedri.
Listen, this is obviously a, a blatant political attack by, by Mr. Urban again. He's been doing it since he was on county council the first time, um, you know, it, it doesn't even matter, but here's the situation, my, my record stands for itself. I've been county manager now for almost four years, I provided $17.6 million in, in surpluses, uh, to Luzerne County. Uh, I have writing this, uh, the, the administration from the, the failures of, of previous administrations. We are, we are in the black financially, we are doing things on a daily basis, but I'm not here to, to judge on, on my record. I apologize for, for interrupting people at council meetings, because I do have a, have a tendency to do that every now and then, but I can't stand when people lie in public. And the statements that Mr. Urban making are blatantly false, and obviously, this is a longstanding issue, that, that he doesn't like me, and he hasn't liked me for years, and that's fine, he doesn't have to like me, we, we are, I'm happy to work with anybody here, but, um, uh, I just wanna say, obviously, I'm here to do my job, and I've done the job over the past five years. Uh, I'll put my record up against anybody, sir.
Yeah, all right. That's, uh, inappropriate, whoever's on, please. Any other, uh, council person?
I just wanna say the fact that, that I call things out as I see them, I call balls and strikes. It's not, I don't have anything against you personally, Mr. Pedri, it's your professionalism, and it, and it's your sort of mental equipment of doing the job, which I don't think you were experienced enough to begin with years ago. But the fact is, is that your record does speak for itself. There were multiple deaths in that prison under your watch, there were multiple lawsuits that we had to pay out, okay? You've cost this county millions, millions.
Lie.
That's not a lie.
Mr. Pedri.
Well, it's your leadership that cost, your leadership, or your leaders have cost us millions, okay? It has cost us millions.
I, I have to call you out on as a liar, sir, when you're lying, I apologize.
Do we want to go back and see how much we settled this, uh, all these lawsuits and add up the numbers?
All right.
The numbers don't lie, Mr. Pedri, a lot, the numbers are all in the math. It's all in the math.
Other members?
Yeah, Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
I take, I take exception to Mr. Pedri's comment that it's a political attack. You just read over thirty, about thirty letters, I guess, I didn't count them all, but you wrote.
No, it's not thirty, it's about ten or fifteen, but it's a good number.
It's a good, a goodly number from people who are not politically attacking the manager or this government. What they're attacking is the accountability factor of what's going on. I don't think it's a political attack at all. I think it's, it's an, it's, it's an observation by not only Mr. Urban and myself, but also an observation of many people in this county that see that there's a problem. Now, if Mr. Pedri wants to call liars and whatever he wants to say, that's fine, I don't, I don't really have an issue with what he has to say about what Mr. Urban's saying, but I think the, the ultimate Charter statement says that if the manager's not doing something that we're, and you've made this comment at many, many meetings, Mr. McGinley, that we have the ability to terminate the manager if he does something we don't appreciate or something that we're not happy with. It's very clear. So maybe, maybe Mr. Mr. Urban's motion needs to change if this, if the Office of Law is saying that a, a vote of no confidence is not the proper motion, maybe the proper motion is to make the termination motion again. But the issue I'm having is, is that, that, the Office of Law seems to always chime in to try and say what we cannot do legislatively when we don't, when we don't ask, yet when we pass an administrative code, as we did, that said positions are legislatively authorized, also, Office of Law is silent, they say nothing, but let us attack the manager for no confidence because we just had fifteen letters writ, read into the record of people in this county that aren't happy, and we're politically attacking the man. Uh, I think there's a, there's a big disconnect here, I think, I think what we need to do is we need to make the manager accountable, and that's the way it has to be, unfortunately. Uh, if we can do it some other way short of terminating him, I'm all for that. I think, I think the termination clause that's in the Charter, for somebody to say, you could terminate the manager simply because he doesn't follow the budget, is, is severely wrong. I wouldn't wanna see us lose a good manager because he doesn't do something properly, and without the majority, or with the majority, that could certainly happen, so I, I take exception to the fact that he says these are political attacks. I think the attack from Mr. Urban, as well as the second from me, is the fact that there are shortcomings in the administration, and they're noted every single day. Mr. Shiner's brought them up, other people have brought them up, it's incompetence by the administration, it needs to be corrected. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just wanna clarify, too, that it's not political because he's appointed, and he's not voted in.
Okay.
Except for his, uh, you know, I'm sorry. Forget it.
All right. Um, Mr. Duloka?
Yes.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor, uh, we did not have public comment on this.
You have to have public comment on it before you vote.
All right. Now we're open to the public on this motion.
Mr. Manta.
Go ahead, Mr. Manta, and please, Mr. Manta, uh, you know.
Okay, I, I, I'm gonna be as professional. I am going to be as professional as I can.
Thank you.
Being, being the fact that I was in the military for thirty-five years, and I handled a lot of people in my life, a lot of soldiers are still living because of the way I handle things, and no one's died under my watch. I handled fuel for thirty-five years.
Okay.
No one, no one has died under my watch. To bring the point to a head of all this situation is, I have a little, a little tablet that I write down everything at every meeting. Three million dollars for one lawsuit, for one settlement, nine thousand dollars, nine thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars for another settlement, nineteen thousand dollars for an audit, and then let's go back and visit this money that was spent for roads instead of bridges. So, I mean, you know, this, this, this boggles my mind how it seems like, I'll, I'll put it in real lame terms, if he was a weatherman and didn't predict the weather right, he'd still have his job, but when you predict the weather and you're wrong, you don't get fired, but when you predict something like these incidents that he's been accused of, I think that the county council should take a better look at his performance, and, and I have nothing against the man, believe me, I don't, but let's look at the performance of the items that were brought across his desk and that were, we're paying out as taxpayers, and if he says, oh yeah, we're in the black, well then why, if we're in the black, can't we give the people a break for their taxes? You know, it, it just, these conflicting stories that are, that are, that are thrown around here tonight, that, you know, I, it, it just has, it has people unsettled for what he's doing. I mean, you know, I, I, I just, I don't know what to say, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just baffled with all the bullshit, and, and, and I just don't understand.
Mr. Manta, please, uh, with your language.
I'm sorry.
Short words.
So, so, to end, to end my, my little bit of a, of a, of a, of a display, it, it, it means to me more, when you come to a meeting and you're prepared at that meeting, not to say that, you know, oh, oh, we'll get to that, just like the, the, uh, the lady that was on there, and the, the, they tabled it and, and, wait a minute, shouldn't she, shouldn't he have been prepared for what this woman had to say? I, you know, I just don't understand, I mean, yep, he's an attorney.
Okay.
I mean, uh.
Thank you.
My office is an attorney.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Raybo.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Yes, um, I have, I have, like I said, been at these meetings since the, you know, beginning of Home Rule, and, you know, I saw how the other manager operated, and I see how this manager operates, and the other manager had experience coming into the job. This manager did not, and I was willing to just give, you know, somebody, you know, that had some experience with the courthouse a chance, and since that time, you know, it's been, you know, one thing after another, and you know what? As far as like, with regards to the prison alone, just the prison alone, with the deaths of the, you know, the female suicide deaths that happened four years ago, now this death, and even when members of the public like myself proposed solutions and options that could have been utilized only for the Office of Law to give, render some opinion that, you know, had some kind of a loophole, and I understand that's their job, okay? But, you know, an oversight board, would it, would be a solution that would at least give confidence to the public so that way it would ensure transparency and accountability? Key word, accountability, because as I said, Mr. McGinley, at, at a previous meeting a few years ago, and I'm gonna say it again, uh, transparency without accountability is like a toothless tiger, okay? You could have all the transparency in the world, but if nobody's held accountable for their blunders and their irresponsibility and their reckless actions, then what purpose is Home Rule? What purpose does Home Rule have? It's just, it's just a mirage, it's just like, you know, uh, musical chairs. So what, what I would ask for council to do is, if the wording is not to your liking, you know, loss of, lack of confidence, then something that shows that the manager was very, you know, derelict in his duty, okay? And you put a rep, you know, some sort of, if not a reprimand, then some sort of a, a warning on his, on his record to show that he messed up and that he should learn from his mistakes, okay? That's what we all do, we all make mistakes, we're not perfect, we're all human, but you know what? We need to learn from our mistakes, and we need to recognize that if we don't learn from our mistakes, we don't grow as individuals, and we don't actually improve our performance as professionals. That's, I think that's what needs to happen here.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
There's someone else who's, uh, wanted to comment?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ron Knapp?
Go ahead, Mr. Knapp.
I just wanted to emphasize, I'm surprised that nobody, um, mentioned it, that the notion that only fifty thousand dollars will be picked up by the, uh, taxpayers for the three million, respect to, uh, insurance covering the rest, nobody can put a price tag on a person's life. I, I think, I, I find that so out there that somebody could say, and it was in the press, that the reason why this could be just swept under the carpet, if you will, is because the taxpayers are only paying fifty thousand dollars of the bill. Uh, in respect to the whole gamut of it, is that Manager Pedri hires everybody at that Luzerne County prison. Here's the heads. In the video, I must ask, Matt, uh, Chairman McGinley, if you have viewed the video, oh, yes, you have, in the, uh, private session, I come to think about it, that, that. I think it's so important that, for the notion that, oh, the taxpayers are only gonna pay fifty thousand of the three million dollar payout, that's just the wrong way to observe things, and, um, accountability is key here, because if you have multiple deaths, this isn't just the first one, multiple deaths, some, somebody has to answer for this lack of the goal, lack of, lack of the goal, means of managing, and if it isn't taken care of in this timeframe of a three-month or six-month period, trust me, the taxpayer, the voters will answer and be the ultimate judge in it. That is my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, um.
Anyone else?
Yes, I'm Ari Datto from Wolfspire.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Datto.
I think enough is enough. What was going on with Venice County? The people are sick and tired of being sick and tired. You heard the story, you heard the pain, it's time for a change, it's time to break the barrier of the good old boys' club. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hello.
Brian Shiner.
Go ahead, Mr. Shiner.
A little while ago, seven of you voted to reprimand a fellow colleague. The Office of Law said nothing, but when you wanna consider a reprimand for one of your employees, the Office of Law chimes right in and says that it's a violation of the Charter. Well, I've read the Charter once or twenty times, and I just can't find that part. You have two employees, the clerk and the manager. If you were to terminate the manager tomorrow, just because you took a vote and decided, where's the cause? Where's the backup? There's none, because you don't formally vote on anything that he does that is not to your liking, and it's called a reprimand. We have many unions in the county, you can't just walk in and fire a union employee just because you want to, you have to have write-ups, reprimands. It's the way the world works. Now, I'm not saying that he deserves one or doesn't deserve one, all I'm saying is the procedure and the way you need to address your employees has to be established and followed through. You do an annual review of this, of, of the manager. That's not sufficient. If there are things that happen during the course of the year, you have to document them, otherwise you're opening this county up for a tremendous lawsuit. You're all intelligent adults. If you don't understand how this works, talk to someone and find out, but don't talk to the Office of Law because they're giving you bad opinions, and just because they give you an opinion doesn't mean you have to follow it, you can follow your heart and your mind, and if they don't like it, then they can contest it. That's the privilege of the administration in the Charter. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Elizabeth Hartman.
Go ahead, Ms. Hartman.
I, I'll yield the floor, I'll yield my time right now, I'll go after her, that is the daughter of the victim on the line, so she can go before me.
Okay, I don't know the young lady's name.
I am the daughter of Tatiana Mackey.
Tatiana?
Tatiana Mackey is my name, Tatiana.
Go ahead.
I'm calling on the behalf of my father, Shaheen Mackey. I'm calling that the current existing policies and procedures be implemented for the Department of Corrections be enforced with accountability, and if consequences are violated, there will, there's consequences for, for what they, for what they did to my father. If you watched the video, if any of you watched the video, you can tell right away that he was neglected, that they had no. that they had no sympathy for what he was going through and that they did not care. You received all these emails and even, this has been going on for two years now and nothing has still been done. How long does, do we have to wait? How long does his family have to wait? He has children that he will now never, never get to see, go to school, go to college, graduate, any of that. And that is not fair, that is not fair at all. The DA has failed us. So if you honestly care about the community and you truly do want to represent us and you will allow the case to be reinvestigated outside of Luzerne County, not have your own people come in and investigate, because that does not make any sense, and reforming the prison. And also remove David Pedri, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hartman?
Thank you, I knew that was the daughter and I knew she was trying to get in, so I wanted to give her time. So tonight, counsel voted to reprimand Walter Griffith for a Facebook post. They're asking for something on his employment file saying that he was basically asleep at the wheel. I don't understand why this is such a big issue on this vote when we already did the same type of vote two hours ago. There was not an issue there, I don't see what the issue is here. I have nothing against Mr. Pedri, I really don't, I really don't. Mr. Pedri failed, the DA's office failed, I help citizens fight for, against county agencies all the time. I'm an advocate for LGBTQ, I'm an advocate for children and youth, I'm an advocate for medical marijuana, okay? So I'm an advocate for everything. And when I saw this, I wanted to puke that video, okay? So he needs, he fell asleep at the wheel, he's looking at the money and the money ain't everything, it's the people, okay? The people count, we vote, we put you there. The people count. This needs to be on file in his record. I'm not saying fire him, I'm saying it needs to be in his record and they need to take the vote tonight for the family. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Hello, Jason Carr, Salersburg, Pennsylvania.
Mr. Carr, go ahead.
As everyone knows, thank you, Mr. McGinley. As everyone knows on counsel, approximately four months ago, I came and spoke about a law that was being violated, a statute that was being violated regarding purchases being assessed out of the repository. When I asked Mr. Pedri for a resolution, he gave me the wrong information. And I knew that, and I knew I was being stonewalled. I knew better than to ask the chief counsel, Ms. Crocamo, as well as Mr. Vio DeLuca. Because as we all know, it's a good old boy network and you all stick together. And in my opinion, in my opinion, that Luzerne County government is corrupt. And for every person on this phone tonight, I gave a blueprint on how to deal with David Pedri and the corrupt government of Luzerne County. You go above them, you go to the Attorney General's office, you go to the Auditor General's office and you ask for help. Because trust me, when I spoke to them and they interviewed me, they know the corruption that goes on in Luzerne County. They know about David Pedri. They know about the office of law. They know about the district attorney. They know they all work together congruently to cover themselves. Because that's my opinion, but they also know that. When I went to the Attorney General, he intervened on my behalf. And he made Luzerne County to begin to follow the law. So, to everyone listening tonight, especially Mr. Mackey's family and all those that support Mr. Mackey, please ask for an outside investigation of what's happened here, of the death of Mr. Mackey. Go to the Auditor General, go to the Attorney General, write the governor and ask for an investigation. Because Mr. Pedri should be removed.
Okay, anyone else from the public, please?
Hello, John Toshky?
Go ahead, Mr. Toshky.
Um, yeah, this is about the, Mr. Pedri, his reprimand, correct?
This is about a motion to, for no confidence.
Vote of no confidence, okay. Yeah, I think that I support the voting no confidence. Really, I'm concerned, you know, with what happened at the prison. Was there, here's a question, was there any changes made from when that happened to now? You know, that's really, you know-
You're speaking on the agenda item which regards to the vote or the motion that was presented for no confidence.
Yes, on Mr. Pedri, correct?
The prison issue is a different issue. And certainly we'll provide that answer, you can send an email tomorrow or whatever and we'll certainly provide the information for you. But your comment right now on the agenda item, no confidence vote.
Okay, I just, I support no confidence vote in Mr. Pedri, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Roll call, please. This is a motion presented by Mr. Urban, seconded by Mr. Griffith of a no conference vote in relation to the county manager, Mr. David Pedri.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
No.
Ms. Haug? Ms. Haug? I'll come back, Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radon?
No.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. Haug? Ms. Haug? How do I proceed from here with the-
One more time, ask for Ms. Haug's vote, please.
Ms. Haug?
Okay, move on.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
You have two yes and eight no.
Thank you. Okay, that finishes the agenda, that finishes the public comment. Do we have a motion for adjourn?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Sheila.
Seven, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposition, the abstentions unheard, motion carried. Looking at the time and looking at our agenda for the work session, we'll reconvene at nine thirty. I'm going to look at the agenda for the work session and try to trim it down so that we can move along and be done at a reasonable time. We do have a rather important report on the financial report, so that will take precedence and be first on the agenda. Nine thirty we'll reconvene, thank you.